Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us. It's the Tuesday, May 28th, City Council meeting, 5:30. We've already established a quorum from our earlier meeting on budgets, so we will move into a moment of silence. And I'll ask Mr. Lafay to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Newmeyer. Close session report?
Good evening, Madam Mayor. No close session items to report tonight.
Thank you. We had no close session. With that, we will move to City Manager Reports, announcements, and presentations. I'll kick off with the laundry list of all the meetings we've had the last few weeks since we were with you. I had the opportunity to meet with the new Invenergy team, who was here after the offshore wind conference in Sacramento and toured our harbor, along with our City Manager, Harbor Director, and Mayor Pro Tim Landrum from our subcommittee. I attended the Recreation Advisory Board meeting and the Citizens Finance Committee meeting, along with Councilmember Edwards, and the Planning Commission meeting. I had the opportunity to have lunch with the San Luis County mayors at a meeting in Atascadero, where they shared their work that they're doing on their new zoo accreditation and going to be building a whole new experience over there, which I think we're all going to enjoy and are looking for support from all the cities and the county in their new endeavor. We had legislative updates while we were there, and they were sharing the challenges that San Luis County is having right now with reimbursements on Medicare. And we definitely had advocacy working at the state and federal level for us with that. Tended the Ironman. Shout out to all the volunteers. Councilmember Ford was down there, working in the tent. Councilmember Landrum was down there at, I think, 5:00 or 5:30 in the morning. And the police department, all our city teams, Harbor Department, everyone, it was a great event. It seemed better on Sunday this year, I think. And also, the Ironman Kids' Day, I'm sure we're going to get some updates from the staff on all of that. Met with BES, which is the Battery Storage Subcommittee, with Councilmember Edwards, and had an opportunity to tour the harbor on the dredge, why it's here, and I'm going to say on the Yakinia, but I always say it wrong anyway. We had a WRF Subcommittee meeting, Water Reclamation Facility Subcommittee, and we'll have a staff update on that, as well as the battery update meeting here in just a few minutes. We have SLOCOG tomorrow morning with the Regional Transit Authority, who's putting online their new electric buses. And last, but not least, I'm going to give a huge shout out to Morro Bay High School graduating seniors next week. Next week is their big week. Go Pirates! We're proud of you all. And with that, I will look to my right, Councilmember Burton. Announcements?
I have a few announcements, actually quite a few. Our last meeting was on the 14th, and the next day, Wednesday, I began that morning at the courthouse, where I attended the local, our local fishermen's trial regarding ocean surveying and Senate Bill 286. There were no empty seats in the courtroom. Our fishermen had requested an injunction to halt Equinor from continuing high-resolution geographic site surveys in federal waters. They believe that the surveying should be postponed until the best practices that are required in the Senate bill have been determined. Also, they believe that the seventh condition from the California Coastal Commission constituency determined that for Boham, for the Boham lease, it stipulates that there must be a working group, which is to include our fishermen. And one job of this working group is to determine best practices for such things, including site surveys, which was specifically mentioned, and this has not been done. They strongly feel that the study should be completed first, as required, and that this would create a baseline. Currently, there is no monitoring being done and no independent acoustic surveying. The judge denied the injunction, but did leave it open for the fishermen to appeal, which they are considering, and the next court date was set for July 10th at 9:00 a.m. The fishermen are concerned that the required website showing the survey vessel's location and route appears to be inaccurate, and they have, at their own expense, paid for accurate AIS tracking that shows the vessel in a totally different area. This is very important to them, as they, these are areas in which they fish, and also because it can be very dangerous in foggy conditions if the radar shows vessels in incorrect locations. The fishermen believe offshore wind will have a disastrous impact on our fisheries and are trying to save them. They say it will eliminate all small fishermen and only big corporate fishing will be left. Since the surveying began, they have noticed a significant decrease in fish. After that, I went to the Homeless Services Oversight Committee meeting in San Luis, and I had heard the results of the point-in-time count report, where it was announced that our county's homeless population had decre, well, I have, I had heard that prior to this in the news, that our homeless population had decreased, but now I have a better understanding that the point-in-time number doesn't necessarily reflect our overall numbers of homeless individuals. It's just what it says. It's that day's available number. So on January 22nd, 2023, there were 1,172 homeless individuals counted. Of this number, 797 were unsheltered. The remaining 375 stayed in some type of shelter. Seventy-two percent of those were between the ages of 35 to 54 years old. Ninety-four percent were adults only, and 28% were chronically homeless. Next, after that meeting, I had a big day. I returned to Morro Bay and attended the National Estuary Program Board meeting. I'll mention some of what was reported. County and state parks are working on a joint project in response to a call from NEP staff regarding the trash from the encampment on Torrey Road by the creek. There was a trash, there was trash and other pollutants that were ending up in the creek, which feeds into the estuary. As of that meeting, it wasn't totally cleaned up, but it had been heavily reduced. At the January, June 14th Coastal Commission meeting, they will be deciding on possibly unlocking a portion of building, of a building moratorium in Los Sosos. A map of the estuary's eel grass has been created, and it shows it's covering, eel grass is covering 750 acres of the estuary, and it is the most eel grass they've ever seen and likely the maximum carrying potential of the bay. One reason they attribute this to is that the last two years, we've had cooler weather and water temperatures. It's at elevations not seen before, so they don't expect it to last to this level, but it's a great sign. I've been, I've asked them what the formula to determine how much carbon capture this equates to, but they weren't able to answer that. They're going to, hopefully, we can figure that out, because I think that would be a good thing to know. The last thing I found interesting was that when they, that they are mapping the invasive species of Choro Creek to identify and help inform priority areas to remove them. On the north section of Cidioam Sandsbit, they plan to remove the ice plant, which is an invasive species. I was very surprised to find out that they use glyphosate to do this, as it is viewed as, the ice plant is viewed as too heavy and labor-intensive for hand removal. On the next day, the, I think Mayor already announced, we, we met with Invenergy, some Invenergy employees and took them out on the bay. Let's see, after this, I drove to Carmel to attend a panel presentation put on by California Arts and Science Sciences Institute. They had invited me, and it was much, it was on, it was much more affordable than the Pacific Offshore Wind Industry Summit in Sacramento. The subject was offshore wind. Some of the panelists were PhDs in economics and one in science, who had advised presidents on environmental acoustics. I learned so much from this, it would take an hour to report. A couple of highlights are that the U.S. Coast Guard has put out an official report that their service will decline by 50% because of the cables and radar involved in offshore wind, which I hadn't heard before, and also that fisheries in the UK have declined by 96% since offshore wind started. The expert explained how whales have the most sophisticated communication in the world. They have a huge and intricate vocabulary. He was very concerned about the effects of them being exposed to high sound levels, as happens with sonar, and recommends that whale necropsies be done on their inner ears, which would prove whether or not this was causing harm. Yes, the subcommittee, and the Ironman I volunteered out was, or was volunteered for, was, I was really glad that I did get, volunteered to do that, but I got to see that we had over 2,000 contestants, or no, 2,000 people in town, and I can't, I think it was like 1,600 contestants, and they just, it was amazing to see them all hit the water. I mean, they didn't do it all at once, but it was, it was fun to watch. And then I was stationed at the transition, where they come, come out of the water and get on their bikes, and then, then they come back and get, and run, and that was, that was really amazing to watch. They were complaining about the current, a lot of complaining about the current, that was really hard for them to, they were paddling and going nowhere, and they were worried about their times. It just looked freezing, though. I couldn't believe it. I heard, let's see, I have to go over here. Oh, let's see. There are some, oh, and during the budget, we, we were discussing whether the sales tax, because there were some expensive items that they were selling at the Ironman Village, but we're not sure whether the city gets revenue from the sales tax. I hope we do. Some things that I noticed we needed improving on are the trash situation needs to be worked out and improved, and also, there were, there were so many people that they were overflowing, and I was disappointed to see there weren't any recycle bins. But otherwise, I agree with the mayor that it was way improved, and I, one of the complaints I heard from Michael at Visit Morro Bay was that the, from the participants, was that there was a lack of, of healthy food. He said that Shine and Albertson's had great days, and that athletes tend to not want fried food. And, oh, and I have, my next town hall meeting is coming up on June 9th at the Community Center from 2:00 to 4:00. The subject is a focus on downtown. We've learned a lot from the Downtown Design District Subcommittee, and I wanted to check in and get a broader perspective on some of the topics, like the footprint of where downtown is, what areas should be included in downtown, building heights, parking, housing, mixed use, trees, economic development, zoning, historic and character-defining buildings, view preservation, and more. So, so if you can make it, come to the town hall meeting on, on June 9th from 2:00 to 4:00 at the Community Center.
Councilmember Edwards?
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, I wanted to thank the mayor. One of the things that I got to attend over the last few weeks was the air quality control meeting in San Luis Obispo. It might sound very strange, but maybe I'm just a nerd, but I really, really enjoyed the meeting. I found the people that she gets to meet with really welcoming, and they definitely missed you. So, enjoyed that meeting, talked about the Oceana Dunes and kind of the, the metrics that go into measuring the toxic, you know, particles within the dust that's brought up by riding in that area, learning about the plovers, which we all have in common between Morro Bay and the dunes there. And anyway, it was very interesting. And outside of that, I've been asked to help with this. The Morro Bay Marine Swap Meet is Saturday, June 29th. This is from 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the Morro Bay Maritime Museum, and it's free admission. It says boat, surfboards, marine supplies, marine hardware, fishing gear, nautical antiques, maritime art and collectibles, dive and scuba, buy and sell, vendor spaces are available.
Thank you. Councilmember Ford?
Yeah. I just want to touch on Ironman. I, my daughter and I got the chance to help set up and run and tear down the food tent, and it was a really rigorous volunteer job. So, watch what hap, you know, be careful when you say, "Throw me in wherever you need me." But it was, it was, it was a great experience, because last year I got the easier job of putting, you know, the medals on people, and as, while that was mentally rewarding, it wasn't nearly as physical. So, this year, I got the chance to do that. But I just want to say that I appreciate the changes that Visit Morro Bay suggested and Ironman suggested in the city, and how we all kind of came together and made some improvements on the day. I made a point of walking around downtown and different areas of Morro Bay with my dogs on Saturday, just to kind of get an idea of how busy it was, because that was the day that we normally would have had Ironman. And it seemed pretty bustling, it seemed pretty busy. I don't, you know, I guess we'll, we'll find out, you know, for how businesses really felt about it, but it, it appeared to be busier than it was last year, and so hopefully it was. But I understand that we had, you know, we'll hear more, I'm sure, from the Ironman report that we'll get later. We did have some setbacks, like the, the swim was really difficult. I know that Ironman is going to be helping with, with that situation. There, there's compensation that will be happening for the people who did not finish. So hopefully, that will help people return, and that they won't be, you know, afraid to come back. I know there'll be some other improvements as well, but overall, it seemed to be, people would seem to be in good spirits, the athletes, again this year, when they came through, they made a point of saying, I would say probably 99.5% of the athletes thanked me when I handed them their oranges and their food and stuff, and just said, "Thank you for having us here." So, I feel as though the athletes seem to, overall, be appreciative. So, anyway, I just want to thank all the volunteers that were there, the city staff. Our staff had to work your heinies off. Like, we, you guys did so much to make it happen, and probably, maybe a little bit more than we should have had to do, but I am very appreciative of our staff members that put all the time and energy into that event to make it happen. And just something to keep in mind for next year, you guys, because we do have one more year in our contract, volunteers are truly needed. We did get enough to cover all the different areas, however, most people covered it the entire day. So, many of you know, when you're volunteering for some things, you know, making that sustainable and having our volunteers come back year after year, if they're required to be there from sunup to the end of the event, they may not come back again the next year. So, if you're at all interested, you know, keep that in mind for this next year. If you could pitch in a couple of hours, that would be amazing, and I know that our athletes would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Ford. City Manager Kimball. Staff reports? Or subcommittee reports?
Yep. Okay. Thank you, Mayor. For, for City Manager Report, I just wanted to remind the community that the City Manager Monthly Update Newsletter is going to come out, and hopefully by Monday, and if you have not signed up, please sign up. We can, you can sign up to receive the newsletters on our website, and, or you can send me email, we can get you sent, signed up. And, and then I know we have introduction today, and followed by that, and Chief Amy going to give staff's perspective on Ironman, and then we can move on to the subcommittee reports.
Thank you, Manager Yvonne. Mayor and Council. I'm happy to introduce tonight Kim Fowler, who is the city's new planning manager in the Community Development Department. And Kim has 20 years of experience in city planning, including both public and private sector experience. Her educational background includes three bachelor's degrees from UC Irvine, and these include environmental analysis and design with a city planning focus, criminology, law and society, and psychology and social behavior. And so, I joked when I introduced her to the Planning Commission that she's got us all figured out with those degrees, and now that I've worked with her for a few months, I'm certain of it. Kim's a very insightful, thoughtful planner, and I think she's going to do great work for, for the city of Morro Bay. She's also an animal lover and a horse person in particular, so great respect to anybody that can handle an animal like that. So, without further ado, Kim, come on up and say hello.
Hello, I'm Kim Fowler. I've been here since middle of February. I started part-time to help out in the planning department, and that quickly escalated into a full-time position. I'm really happy to be here. Morro Bay is a beautiful, beautiful town. My door is always open if anybody, anybody, has anything that they want to share with the planning department, and with me in particular. And I guess lastly, I will be the first of all and two for next year's Ironman. So, there we go.
Thank you. Kim, thank you for attending the offshore wind conference also.
Absolutely.
We appreciate that.
My pleasure.
You are the representative for the city of Morro Bay, so thank you.
You're welcome.
I guess it's my turn to talk a little bit about Ironman. So, yes, this year, we held the event on Sunday. We welcomed, from my numbers, it was 21 athletes, 2,100 athletes registered and 1,800, just over 1,800 checked in. So, we had 1,800-plus hit the water Sunday morning at 6:00 a.m., and each of those athletes bring about 2.1 to 2.2 visitors. Don't ask me what the .1 and .2 is. Maybe it's the little ones, I'm not sure, but they, they brought those spectators with them, in addition to our normal traffic that we have on, on, you know, wonderful summer weekends. So, 1,800 athletes, another 6,000 spectators. State Parks addition was a beneficial, was a benefit this year for traffic flow, most importantly, and that's what we were really looking for with that addition. So, just to give you an idea of how that impacted our flow from the first year, areas where we saw a large impact was greatly reduced, was those areas, Embarcadero from Beach Street all the way out to the Rock. We were able to open up Embarcadero from Beach out to the Rock at 12:45, where last year, we couldn't open that up till about 2:00, 2:30. So, that was a large impact, certainly for our restaurants along the, the Embarcadero. They had opportunities to welcome their local guests, which they normally do on Sunday evenings for dinner, is what I heard from the business owners. Main Street from Piney to Olive remained open to northbound traffic or incoming traffic into Morro Bay. So, there was no, last year, we had to close that completely because of the three loops that the runners had to run. And then, the other major area that we noticed was Marina Street at Moro Avenue to the Embarcadero for our fishermen and other people who were trying to get down to Thailand's Park. That was, I passed by that area. That was a huge impact for us last year, and was really reduced to just about nothing. The traffic was really able to get through to the Embarcadero. One could be because of the, the Sunday, but I really think that you saw the space between athletes running more so, much more so than you did last year. We had, we welcomed 80 law enforcement personnel that assisted throughout Morro Bay to make the event safe. So, this was from Main Street at Kern Avenue, the entrance of State Parks, all the way to Highway 1 at Yerba Buena. So, we covered the entire city footprint. And the event was very safe. We didn't have any issues, no traffic congestion, really. I mean, I drove throughout the event, I drove the city from one end to the other, and rarely spent more than probably a minute or two in traffic, and that was at Main Street and Atascadero, and I'll explain that as to why that was. Lot of support from our local businesses and our community members. It was really great to drive around and see a lot of our residents out cheering on the athletes. And you could see it, I saw a few picnic tables and beach chairs, and they were out with their, you know, snacks and really enjoying the event. There were not enough volunteers, as far as the trash concern. I also saw that and made contact with the volunteer coordinator for Ironman and requested that trash to get picked up, especially during the afternoon, when our winds started to kick up. So, when I spoke to the volunteer coordinator for Ironman, she had mentioned that we did not have enough volunteers to staff a trash crew. So, what she did is she had Ironman personnel head out and immediately address the Coleman Beach trash issue that I identified, and then also Public Works, and off-duty Public Works, identified a trash issue along Centennial Park. So, those were addressed, but again, that's something, just like last year, we have a checklist of things that we'll go through our debrief with Ironman to make sure that year three is improved upon, from year to year. And then, we had, oh, Iron Kids on Saturday. Welcome 77 young athletes to go compete in the Iron Kids. Our recreation manager, Kirk Carmichael, really used his, his skills and Cal Poly, some Cal Poly students came and, and got to participate in setting up the, the event and promoting the event. So, that was a great thing on Saturday, and before I knew it, they were up and then they were gone. And it was amazing how quickly that, that was pushed through. Our staff personnel started the day at 3:30 a.m. and concluded at about 5:00 p.m. So, as you mentioned, that was a very long day. And then, one, one thing that was not anticipated that we learned about, actually Friday, was a basketball tournament that was happening at Morro Bay High School. And as you know, our bike event goes out, Embarcadero and onto Atascadero and onto the highway. So, it is virtually impossible for us to cross that bike traffic. Those bicyclists are going anywhere from 17 to 23 miles an hour, and so to try to squeeze in a vehicle, we can pass people as they're walking, but it was very difficult to try to park those amount of cars, and this event was carrying 150 to 200 cars. It was a large event. And again, we weren't aware of that. It wasn't ever really mentioned until we learned it, just by accident, actually, on Friday. So, your police department reached out to the organizer, sent out some maps. We utilized Lila Kaiser for parking. We requested a lot of the other individuals to use cloisters for parking. That did not necessarily go as planned, so we had a lot of parking along Main Street. We had a lot of parking in the neighborhoods, up on Hill Street and some of the Rockview areas. But I'll tell you this, is that we, we adapted the best we could. We had a lot of people walking in the area, but again, during the height of, of really the amount of people that were coming in to visit the high school, the congestion was fairly limited. I had a volunteer at Main Street at Atascadero that was working traffic, and he did an amazing job, and he was out there all day. So, we did our very best. The basketball tournament organizer worked well with us. The parents were very understanding, but this was a two-day basketball tournament. So, it was, to have to find a place to park 150 cars when you've shut down pretty much the parking lot of Morro Bay High School was quite a, quite a feat. So, but like I always say, we are a facility for Ironman to come in and provide this kind of event for their customers or their athletes, and our main goal is to make sure it's safe and that Ironman is set up to do what they need to do. As far as the swim and things like that, obviously, they've, you know, experienced that, they were out there, but at the end of the day, this is something that, it is their job and responsibility to put on. We are simply a facility, and, and we remove as many obstacles as we can for them. Unfortunately, we cannot remove the tides of the currents. So, so yeah, it was, in, in, in the grand scheme of things, it was very successful. Everybody was safe, and nobody was, was hurt and injured, and I think the feedback that I got certainly from our businesses immediately, was that it was much appreciated that it was on a Sunday. it was much appreciated that it was on a Sunday. And hopefully, that'll be an impact that'll be felt next year as well. And then continuing with State Parks, we'll be working on that as well, because I think that was a big impact for us.
Thank you, Chief.
Can I make a quick comment, Mayor?
Quick.
Really quick. One of the things to also bring up about the volunteers is that Ironman does pay nonprofits to keep that in mind as well for next year. So if you have a nonprofit who has volunteers, I think you have to have 10 volunteers, I think, or more in your group to get paid. But that's also something to consider for next year, and that could help resolve some of those problems, get some nonprofits paid and get the volunteers there, so.
Mr. Qualick? Oh, I'm sorry. Whoever's up next.
Just to tie in with what Chief Watkins was saying about the Ironman event, from the safety perspective for medical personnel, the Morro Bay Fire Department in partnership with San Luis Ambulance and Cambria Ambulance provided paramedic support and grand ambulance support. And out of approximately 1,800 contestants, we only had to transport two patients by ambulance to the hospital. Harbor Patrol and all the water resources did an amazing job. They extricated, last number I heard was about 250 people out of the water. Fire Department were using the UTVs to transport people from the extraction points to the medical tents, and then ambulances were used as warming stations. We have a few things to work with Ironman to just improve for next year. But overall, with that number of people and the difficulties they were experiencing, to only have two people that were transported, it was really quite spectacular.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Mayor. So moving on to the subcommittee reports, and the first one, we're gonna have the WRF Committee report, and Public Works Director Greg Colick is gonna give you a report.
Thank you, City Manager Kimball, and good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Council. The WRF Subcommittee did meet last Monday. We had a pretty productive meeting, and that's where we announced that the firm that was hired jointly by Cayuga Sanitary District and the city of Morro Bay to appraise the old wastewater treatment plant site, as well as some surrounding sites that are jointly owned, did finally complete their appraisal, and they did provide the city with a draft appraisal. And so that is currently under review. We reviewed it at a high level with the WRF Subcommittee, but there is still some more review to be done. Staff has some follow-up with the appraiser and with Cayuga Sanitary District there. So more forthcoming as that progresses. And the other update that was given to the WRF Subcommittee last Monday was some additional steps that need to be taken to continue forward the indirect potable reuse project, otherwise known as recycled water. We have a few contract amendments and one new contract that would have to be approved by City Council. So we're hoping to bring those to the City Council at their meeting on June 11th, and that's all.
Thank you.
All right, Mayor and Council, I have an update on the BEST Subcommittee, and I just want to highlight, first of all, that the BEST project is not on the agenda tonight. And a lot of council correspondence was received on the project, but just want to highlight that there's nothing on the agenda tonight, but today is the last day for members of the public to provide comments for those to be responded to in the final EIR. So all comments that were submitted to the City Council or to the Planning Commission directly, we've captured those, so that's fine. I just want to clarify for members of the public that it's not on any agenda and no decision's going to be made. But the comments over the weekend, including yesterday and today, continue to roll in, so we've probably tripled or more the number of comments we've received during the entire comment period just in the last few days. So that's been good. And, you know, people can make comments on the project at any time, I just want to highlight that. But this deadline is specifically for the EIR process in terms of there being a response to that comment in the final EIR. Additional information is we continue to expect an economic impact report to be submitted by the applicant. They continued to promise that that would be delivered. I was expecting it today, don't have it. And so we're continuing to wait for that. Otherwise, no other updates. In terms of next steps, staff will be working on completing the updated master plan. The response to comments will be created as part of producing a final EIR, and staff will be working with our consultant, Ringcon, on that effort. And then staff is really working on developing recommendations and alternatives for consideration by the Planning Commission, and those hearings could potentially begin as soon as August. And that completes my report on the BEST.
Did you want to do your downtown design while you're?
Sure, yeah. Downtown design, no updates. Staff continues to work on a summary memo with recommendations, and that, we expect that to be completed by the end of next week.
Thank you.
All right.
Mr. Chafon.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. I have just two items to present tonight. First, the Pacific Offshore Wind Summit was already mentioned in Sacramento, May 13th and 15th. And as mentioned, Kim Fowler, our Planning Manager, attended that meeting. That event brings together federal, state agencies involved in offshore wind, local and state electives, and representatives from the offshore wind leaseholders. And the second item I have is the county has prepared a draft MOU, which I have in my hand, for the offshore wind study that will assess environmental impacts at Morro Bay Harbor. That will be a thorough analysis of the concerns and constraints associated with offshore wind and potential on-water and off-water sites. And this information will be shared and presented to our residents and stakeholders in a series of public meetings. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chafon. That concludes our updates for our subcommittees. And with that, we will move into presentations. I have three proclamations this evening. One of them was unable to attend, but we did want to recognize Hunger Awareness Day proclamation. They've been visitors of ours on a regular basis, and were unable to attend tonight, but we will mail that proclamation to them. Next up, great pleasure to do a proclamation recognizing the Fitness Works in Morro Bay. We are so thankful for all the work that they have given and would like to recognize them. And I will share with you our proclamation. The City Council, the city of Morro Bay, recognizing Fitness Works for their organization of the cleanup aid, removed the trash and debris in the riverbed between Quintana Road and Highway 1 on April 20th, 2024. The City Council of Morro Bay, whereas Fitness Works is a local-owned business that was first incorporated in 1991, and whereas Fitness Works is actively involved in local community organizations, and whereas Fitness Works Company has often provided donations to local charity events, and whereas Fitness Works organized a group of their employees and community volunteers to clean up the riverbed between Quintana Road and Highway 1 to remove the trash and debris left from the previous encampments, and whereas dozens of Fitness Works employees and local citizens spent hours on April 20th, 2024, restoring the riverbed to its natural beauty. Now therefore be it resolved that the city of Morro Bay recognizes and proclaims that Fitness Works has been dedicated to betterment and improvement of our community. The city of Morro Bay thanks Fitness Works for its continued efforts to make Morro Bay a better place to live. And is there representatives from Fitness Works?
Thank you. I guess I'm supposed to speak a little bit? The people usually speak for me, or, excuse you, but I'm gonna do this, yeah. Anyway, thank you for the recognition. And, you know, it kind of goes back to a lot of the staff that I have on our management team. If anybody, or a lot of people do know Ginger Machado, and she's our general manager. And you know why? Because you know Ginger. She sees a project and she will not quit until it's done. And so she was the one who spearheaded getting in contact with Mark Hoffman, I keep forgetting his name, and just keeping it a communication, the owner of the property. And, you know, eventually, so four days before this event happened, we found out that it was happening, because Mark Hoffman had contacted Joe, my husband, and said he was coming into town and was arranging for dumpsters and stuff, and let's do this. And so my administrative manager, who also does our social media, reached out to the chamber. She reached out to our membership base. We sent out emails. We did all sorts of stuff. And I think it was more than a dozen. I think it was over 20 people showed up. It was hard to tell, because everybody was spread out. And we even had some of the city employees out there and their husbands. So thank you, Cindy and Matt. Anyway, thank you for the recognition.
Thank you.
Anything to add?
Yeah, I would just add that we really appreciate the efforts by the city. You know, when I first heard about the ordinance and how it was gonna get implemented, I was sort of skeptical, and I felt like it was gonna be a lot to do with the Morro Bay Fire Department's follow-up, but it worked, you know? So we really appreciate that. And also, just wanted to say, you know, it was a true team effort with everyone. We had so much support from not just our members, but the entire community and other local merchants as well. For one, the Morro Bay Vet Clinic, they were out there with their entire staff, and one of the employees had their 10-year-old daughter helping out. It was really great, and we just, we loved the results, and thanks for the recognition. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you all. We appreciate all you do. The second proclamation is declaring May 18th, May 24th National Safe Boating Week. Whereas more than 100 million Americans, boating remains a beloved pastime. Whether along the shoreline or inland waterways, individuals across the nation are embracing aquatic adventures, be it boating, sailing, kayaking, or fishing. Whereas throughout National Safe Boating Week, the U.S. Coast Guard alongside its federal, state, and local counterparts in safe boating initiatives urges all enthusiasts to relish America's scenic waters with a commitment to safety and responsibility. And whereas National Safe Boating Week is a time to emphasize the importance of responsible boating practices and safety awareness as boaters across the country gear up for the summer season of adventure. And whereas the overwhelming majority of incidents stem from human error or lapse in judgment rather than issues with the boat, its equipment, or environmental conditions. Whereas National Safe Boating Week is observed to bring attention to important life tips for recreational boaters so they can have a safer, more fun experience out of the water, out on the water throughout the year. And whereas, here are the year's top seven tips for safe and enjoyable boating experience. Wear a life jacket. Boat sober. Get your California boater card. Have a proper safety equipment. Stay weather-aware by checking the weather forecast and be prepared for changing conditions. File a float plan and implement clean and green practices. Now therefore be it resolved that the Morro Bay City Council does hereby support the Goals of Safe Boating Campaign and proclaims April 18th to 24th of May 2024 as National Safe Boating Week and the start of the year-round effort to promote safe boating, and urge all who boat to participate safe boating habits and wear life jackets at all times while boating. And is there someone here? Oh, there we go. There she is.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. And Yvonne, thank you very much. It's our pleasure working for the city. It is Safe Boating Day every day of the year for us at the Harbor Patrol. And we have kicked off our summer season. Lifeguards were on duty this last weekend, and you'll see them out there. So it's not just on the boat, but on the beach. We're here for your safety. Thank you.
Before you walk away, I also want to thank you for you and your team and all your work at Ironman last week. It was very important with all those people in the water and the tides. Thank you.
Yeah. It was a great event, but a big job. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we will move on to public comment. I have speaker slips. I'm going to start with our first guest this evening. It's going to be Michael Wood and Bowie Marshall and Maddie Funk from Delmar Elementary. Thank you all for being here.
Good evening, Council. My name is Christine Robertson. I am the Executive Director of the San Luis Coastal Education Foundation, and tonight we have some very special and esteemed constituents who have come here to address you and share some important feedback for you. So let me see if I can get this mic low enough.
Um, hello, I'm Maddie, and I'm from the Delmar fifth grade class.
And I'm Bowie from the Delmar fifth grade class.
We just wanted to say thank you for your generous donation of $6,000 to our camp. We really appreciate it.
As you probably know, Camp has been a great annual experience for the fifth grade class. So we really appreciate your kindness for the next year's fifth graders.
Camp Ocean Pines has been fun for many reasons. We get to study astronomy, dissect squid, see amazing animals, play games, and much, much more. Your generous gift will drastically change the year for our new fifth graders next year. Thank you so much.
Camp Ocean Pines can't be called Camp Ocean Pines if we don't go to the ocean, so that's why I wanted to highlight some things that we did at the end of the week. Some things such as the amazing tide pools, the game of Crepuscular Avengers, and of course, the campfire.
Thank you again.
Before they sit down, Mayor and City Council members, I have thank you cards from the entire fifth grade class for you, handmade, as well as a note from our fifth grade teacher, Ms. Slaven, as well, thanking you. And I'd love our kiddos to come on up and present, please.
Thank you.
Mayor Carlos.
Thank you.
And I wanted to make just a couple of comments. Some of you probably, if you close your eyes, can think back and remember your elementary school camp experience. I remember mine was in the Quea Macca Mountains. I remember getting up before all of the other campers got up with two other campers to go and to read the barometer and do the whole, we did a weather report. I'll never forget that. I remember the raccoon that got into our cabin. And so there are memories that are, this is a watershed moment for kids. And I don't know if you know, but in the San Luis Coastal School District, we do have Title I schools, and Delmar has the largest percentage of Title I students of all of the schools in the San Luis Coastal District. Over 80% of this year's fifth grade class qualify as those students. And so your generous support is really, really appreciated and much, much needed. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We appreciate it. Thank you all. We appreciate it. I have speaker slips. First up is Larry Truesdale, followed by Linda Winters, followed by Jim McGyver.
Hello, I'm Larry Truesdale, resident of Morro Bay, and I think I will now be constituted as the first speaker to speak on the BEST issue after the EIR was due. When I was putting my... When I was putting my comments together for the EIR, one thing I really want to do is do an analysis of what causes the best failures to fail. And there's a lot of information out there and it is really lousy. History goes back to about 2011 and they record every best incidents occurred around the world up to actually 2024, this month. And in that, there's big holes, this huge table. And the holes are anything of importance to allow you to analyze what goes on. You get the location, the date, that's about it. Now, it's not totally that bad, but about 68% of the incidents have that and that only. You don't know the important things to allow you to make best facilities better so that you don't have these problems that occur. The lack of this really comes down to the companies, the power companies, their lack of transparency of being willing to disclose key critical information. They're worried about lawsuits. They're worried about their intellectual property, all sorts of things. But with everything being secret, you can't make it better. This is a big problem. The cause of failure and the severity of an incident is known in only a limited number of cases. The size of a facility is absolutely essential. Is it one megawatt? Is it five or 10? Is it 300 megawatts? Huge differences. And what you see over the years, in particularly the last five years, big numbers are appearing for that. But that is, magnifies the problems that are in this. The general occurrence of a failure, which is what we would have to really monitor, is often a fire. But that is not the really destructive part. If you say fire is not destructive, you gotta, like you're crazy, but that's absolutely true because following that can be what they call a runaway reaction. Here, I've given you all the report. It has all this information with real numbers for what is available and a number because it's really set up for discussion.
Thank you, Larry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council Members. My name is June McIver. I am the Community Engagement Manager for Invenergy, which is one of the leaseholders of the offshore wind energy off our coast. I wanted to thank the Mayor and Mayor Protem Landrum for the time you expended, along with the Harbor Director, the City Manager, in giving Invenergy a tour of the harbor and for your open dialogue. I also wanted to take the opportunity to introduce myself to the rest of the Council and tell you a little bit about myself and a little bit about Invenergy. I have made San Luis Obso County my home for the last 20-plus years. The last eight of that was running Tolosa Winery. The two things I am most passionate about at Tolosa, besides the wine, really were the people, our employees, the people that we worked with, the businesses that we worked with, and our consumers and our customers that are all here locally. I was also very passionate about the environment of our region. The wine industry, like all of us, is very touched by climate change. We did a lot to combat climate change to increase our sustainability. We increased the amount of solar that we used. We made lighter packaging to reduce our energy needs for shipping our product, increased biodiversity in our vineyards. And through that work, I became convinced that the most important thing that I could do with my life and my time is to combat climate change. So, I left the winery and I spent six months figuring out what that means for me. I talked to people, I read, I researched, I attended conferences, and I came to the conclusion that offshore wind is a very exciting opportunity for our region. It gives us an opportunity to reduce our dependence on fossil fuels, which are creating climate change, which is the largest impact on our ocean environment through warming of our oceans, increased acidification of our oceans, and it is having a dire impact on our marine mammals and marine environment. It also lets us meet, help meet California's renewable energy goals and really gives us an opportunity for this region to become a renewable energy hub and a climate tech hub. Let me tell you about Invenergy. I'm proud to work for them. It's an American company. It has 20 years of roots in clean energy. We have over 200 projects globally with producing 31 gigawatts of clean energy. We are committed to environmental stewardship and we are committed to the communities. And my job is to work with our region and our communities to find out how to best make this work for us all. And I look forward to working with you. Thank you very much.
Linda.
I wasn't sure if it was really my turn. Hi, I'm Linda Winters, 30-year resident in the St. Mobile Home Park here in Morro Bay. First talking about Memorial Day and acknowledging it. And I hope that all of you respectfully commemorated and acknowledged the folks in your life that served in the military branches that made it possible for us all to be here tonight. I did. And this is the person I am acknowledging. This is my dad. I'll hold that up for a minute. He served in World War II. He was in Normandy in the second wave of the invasion and went on to liberate Europe. I'm incredibly proud to be his daughter. Thanks, Dad. For those of you who know me, I like to segue into other subjects. And you gave me the perfect opportunity tonight when you honored the Fitness Works and their cleanup, creek cleanup. I would also like to thank Fitness Works Crew and their membership for contributing to the Monday Night Community Dinner Donation Station Clothing Giveaway for men from May 12th to May 31st. We are so grateful to all of those that donated over 50 bags of new and gently-used men's clothes. Why is this so astounding? Generally speaking, men don't part with their clothes until they disintegrate. So, gentlemen, if your closets are suddenly less full, your ladies may have donated them to our cause. And if you want your clothing back, sorry, they're gone to a good cause. But last not, but not least, Chief Amy and your crew, Public Works and your crew, kudos for the Ironman and the smooth operation. You all handled that whole deal so very well. So, some of you may not know that there was also another huge event right here in this building on May 19th. There was a convention here. It was for AA members from all over the state. And I ran into a couple the day before Ironman when I was down here, and they asked me where a good place to park. I suggested Cayucus. I thank you very much and I'll see you the next meeting.
Thank you, Linda. Next up is Natalie, followed by Neil Portlock, followed by Gary Johnson.
All right. Natalie Teichman, resident of Cayucus. So, good evening, Mayor and Councilwomen. Thank you for your time this evening. And also thank you to those of you who have taken the time to speak with us in person. We very much appreciate it. Thank you. As business owners in Morro Bay and residents of Cayucus, we are deeply invested in the health of this community. We are proposing to purchase the building at 781 Market Ave and keep the existing structure along with preserving the existing parking lots. The building at 781 Market Ave may be considered historic, contributing to Morro Bay's quaint feel. And our plan preserves the main structure with an eco-friendly remodel transforming it into a premier wellness and day retreat center. This center will offer a variety of services and programs promoting health, relaxation, well-being, and encouraging visitors to book local hotels, shop at local stores, and enjoy the beautiful offerings of our charming coastal town. It is our intention to continue to expand our offerings and marketing efforts to attract new visitors to Morro Bay, thereby increasing TOT and sales tax, not to mention also increasing the well-being and happiness of visitors and locals alike. Is there a way to measure that? I don't know. But perhaps the stack of letters that we have received from people who have experienced the offerings at our studio may also serve as data to show the positive impact that our studio has on the people that make up our community. We hope that you have taken the time to read some of these letters. They are quite powerful and we are very humbled to know that our offerings are having such a huge impact. And our current business already has tremendous local support. It brings a new demographic to the city, generating continuous revenue. We want to collaborate with the city and other businesses to support all. And isn't that what community is all about? By utilizing and beautifying the existing structure of the building, we will reduce waste and pollution that a full-on demolition of a new hotel would create. We would also minimize disturbances to local businesses. So, this approach would lead to less noise, less environmental impact, and faster revenue generation through TOT and sales tax. We know a city needs to think about finances and business. We get it, we're business owners. But we are also health and wellness advocates whose business is well-being. Thank you for giving us this opportunity to be heard and share our thoughts with you on 781 Market Ave and the future of that property. I would like to hand you our written proposal for your review to keep this conversation going, if that is okay.
Who is here to support?
I'm Neil Portlock, local builder here. I framed the Hampton Hotel there, along with several other hotels in the area in the last five years. And there's more hotels coming up. So, several in none, we need to fill them, right? So, I think we are very fortunate to have John and Natalie here to have such a wonderful business here that actually attracts people from around the world. Being a holistic thing and people, let's go back up. People these days are, since 2020, are really reaching out and taking their vacations purposefully. So, to come to Morro Bay, to have something like this, to come to for a retreat or have you, is really, really beneficial to the community and to the economic stability of these hotels. My wife and I are both in the field too, up in Cambria, and offer a similar retreat-type deal. And we see a growing need for this type of thing. So, not only economically does it make sense, but for the community and humanitarian needs as well, this is an excellent opportunity to take advantage of. For this building, what a perfect place for it. Morro Bay is this outstanding venue to have something like this that would attract people from around the world right here, for you on the map. Thank you.
Thank you.
Smiley faces. Okay, I'm a resident of Morro Bay. I have, my working career has spent 40 years supporting the space programs and satellites as an engineer. Part of that 25 years as a failure analysis engineer. Now retire, I have spent the last two years plus working on the research in lithium ion failures of companies. Morro Bay City Council recently received the Vestra Corporation Environmental Impact Study, the EIR, to build one of the world's largest lithium storage facilities in Morro Bay. The proposed area is within blocks of neighbors, hundreds of people that live here, tourist attractions, businesses, as well as high school just a few blocks away. In summary, of all my research, in summary, 61% of companies that have invested in these lithium batteries, failure, 61% failure. Lithium batteries stored in a modular container are made up of toxic elements. The batteries are very sensitive to mechanical damage and may cause electrical surge. This typical damage to one container can cause an individual battery to overheat rapidly, causing a thermal runaway to surrounding batteries and cause fires and explosions. When toxic smoke and fumes escape from the modular, it will spread across Morro Bay. The city will need to have an extensive evaluation plan to evaluate residents and places to house in. Nearby hospitals will also have to be an important part of the plan. And the first responders are going to be the Police Department and Fire Department. They're going to have a big job ahead of them. For examples, California has had three lithium ion battery events that caused evacuation of residents. The recent one was in Ote Mesa, San Diego County, a population of 51,216, 40-long containers, the same as what they're appropriate for Morro Bay. The fire broke out inside the Gateway Energy Facility Wednesday, took 24 hours for the crews to extinguish it. When the fire recently reignited overnight, prompting the rapid response from firefighters that continues to delay. The fire officials are preparing for it right now. It only lasted two weeks ago. Could take weeks to completely put the whole fire out. In my opinion, what may cause a failure isn't just the lithium batteries that may fail, but the components supporting the batteries may fail as well. And that's my forte right there. And that's my opinion. I'm going to stick with it. Thank you.
Sorry. Grace Lanotti and Annette Logan.
Hello, Council. Thank you for having me. Hello, friends. Thank you for being here. My name is John Novacek and I'm the co-owner of the beloved business at 781 Market Ave. Our sound and yoga studio is more than just a place of business, it's a sanctuary of peace, healing, and community for Morro Bay. I come before you with a heavy heart to discuss the future of our cherished building. We have heard that there are plans to sell, demolish, and develop this property into yet another hotel. This prospect deeply concerns me and I hope to convey why it should concern all of us, using facts from the city of Morro Bay's own data and tax revenue figures. For the past 20 years, the occupancy rate for hotel rooms in Morro Bay averaged under 55% per fiscal year. Over the last decade, the average occupancy rate has remained below 60%. Furthermore, the occupancy rate has only grown by 13% in 20 years. At this rate, even in another 20 years, our hotels will still not be operating at full capacity. These numbers speak volumes. They tell us that Morro Bay does not need another hotel. Building one will only be a temporary fix to a deeper issue. Additionally, there are currently two other large hotels here in Morro Bay that are for sale. This further illustrates that adding another hotel is not the answer to our community's needs. I understand that transient occupancy tax is important to the financial well-being of Morro Bay, and that's where we come in. We are here to become an attraction that brings people from around the globe and help the already underutilized hotels of Morro Bay. Imagine a Morro Bay that invests in long-term solutions rather than quick fixes. Our sound and yoga studio has the potential to be the cornerstone of this vision, a place where both locals and visitors can find solace, inspiration... where both locals and visitors can find solace, inspiration, and a sense of belonging. We can help Morro Bay become a destination known for its commitment to well-being and quality of life. So I stand before you, not just as a business owner, but also a passionate person and advocate for the future of our community. I ask you, do you want to see another underutilized hotel, or do you want to invest in the future that prioritizes the health and happiness of Morro Bay's residents and visitors? Are you willing to support a business that can become a beacon of wellness and prosperity for our town? Thank you for listening and considering a future where Morro Bay thrives through thoughtful, heartfelt decisions. Let us preserve and cherish what makes our community unique and special. Thank you for having me. Thank you, friends. Put your hands up. And I know that we talk a lot about the TOT and making money, and the fact that you guys, money's important to us all, but there's no currency better than time, and I thank you all for giving me your time to be here today to support us. Thank you so much. Have a lovely day.
No clapping, please, just wave. Thank you.
Hi there. My name is Grace Leonati. I am four days new to Morro Bay. My son and I and my husband, we moved from Atlanta, and we live just past the underpass on a Tuscadaro Road. So I'm very new here, so my apologies if I am ignorant of how the city works or anything like that. But I had a vision, not like a spiritual one, but just an art vision for the underpass here. And in Atlanta, we have kind of an art-running project that goes underneath the highways, and I wanted to bring a little bit of that here, potentially, and propose an art idea, possibly partnering with the knowledge of the local nature center, where we can identify the local animals and plants, flora and fauna, possibly even what's in the ocean, in the shallow waters, middle and deep. I was also thinking on the opposite side, we could have a map of Morro Bay, and so I wanted to present a couple ideas for lowering costs, because as an artist, I know murals are stupid expensive. So here you go. For the map of the city, we can have local restaurants bid for their image being depicted, perhaps slightly larger or bigger. So it's an advertisement, and then this also serves as an incentive to keep it looking nice. So a lot of these will be by, you know, in tunnels, so I know people like to tag those. But if we have local businesses being involved, perhaps we can keep them looking nice. Two, we can have involvement from the local elementary, high school, middle schools, their rotary clubs. Perhaps we can have a contest for depicting their elementary, middle, high school, and encourage community involvement. And then, three, another idea is subsidizing the cost by hiring some art students from Cal Poly Slow. Oftentimes, you'll need seniors to have a large art in their portfolio when they graduate, so perhaps we could subsidize it that way. And then I would like to have feedback and hear perhaps thoughts on how we might proceed with this, maybe in a one-on-one or email. So yeah, thank you very much. And I've sent the council an email, so you guys have my info. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and welcome to Morro Bay.
Good evening, Mayor, and city council members and community members. My name is Annette Logan Parker, and I'm here in strong support of the establishment of Let's Get Tuned Sound and Yoga Studio in Morro Bay. I'm a resident of Cambria, and I am a career nurse and founder of Cure for the Kids Foundation, which is a regional cancer and rare disease center that has a catchment area of 31 states. That is located in Las Vegas, Nevada. And as we all know, that Morro Bay is a community that values health, wellness, and a vibrant lifestyle. Let's Get Tuned Sound and Yoga Studio aligns perfectly with these values by offering a holistic approach to physical and mental well-being. This studio is not just a place for yoga. It is a sanctuary for individuals seeking balance, tranquility, and, more importantly, a community connection. These benefits are multifaceted, promoting physical health, mental health, but I really am here today to talk to you about building community. As someone who has built something from the kitchen table, much like what John and Natalie have done in the wellness arena, and although my organization is different, the concept of building something in a community that everybody can get behind is something that is very important. And I can tell you that it is not often that a city has an opportunity to embrace something that brings the community together in such a positive and healthy way, like the Let's Get Tuned studio. And, you know, there's been lots of talk about the economic impact of it. I can tell you that I myself have traveled all over the country for wellness retreats, and I've spent thousands of dollars doing that. And as a connoisseur of those types of retreats, Let's Get Tuned is positioned to put Morro Bay in a very unique category of wellness and health for the community. And I strongly urge that all of the city council members consider this opportunity. It is a significant opportunity, and I am confident that it will bring tremendous value to not only Morro Bay from economic impact, but it will be a positive influence for the entire Slow County. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone. With that, public comment is up, and I have no more speaker slips.
Boy, am I disappointed I didn't decide to talk about Let's Get Tuned today. What a month. May 1st, May Day, May 4th, the Haymarket massacre and the state killings. May 5th, or Cinco de Mayo, pero yo hace un preferencia de el grito de dolores. May 10th, Nelson Mandela's inauguration. May 13th, the Philadelphia Move bombing. May 15th, Bloody Thursday and Nakba Day. May 18th, Plessy v. Ferguson. May 25th, the killing of George Floyd. May 31st, the Tulsa massacres. This is but a small selection of noteworthy events, but I have far more personal reasons to be shaken this month. Yesterday was Memorial Day. As a child, my paternal grandparents would spend the day caring for family graves. My grandfather was also a veteran of the Rhineland Campaign of World War II. I took many lessons from him despite how little he spoke. In fact, it's a rare day when I do not wear his ring upon my hand. More painful still is the fact that the 27th of May was the fifth anniversary of my father's death from cancer. On Thursday, just a few days prior, I was reading the list of demands from the protests at Cal Poly, and I felt sick, thinking about how many of those named have shaken my hand, laughed at my jokes, and dined at my house. The next time I come up here and I talk about mistakes that we make, things that we need to be concerned about, things that we need to do better on, remember, I'm coming from a place where I was taught the value of life by a man who watched everyone around him die, including his entire squad. And I was raised by a man that spent five to six years as the assistant dean and executive director of advancement for the Cal Poly College of Engineering. I know how to play the game, but I choose to be free. I'm not here because I want to be, I'm here to repay the sins of my father. Thank God I burned that poster of Raytheon he gave me.
Well, good evening, Madam Mayor, council members, staff, and members of the public. I'm Steve Ray. Just two hours ago, I was standing in the planning department, turning in a large pile of comment letters for the DEIR, for the BEST Project. It was very, very gratifying for me to be able to do that, because so many people care so much about what's going on in the city and cared enough to write letters about it. And I'll tell you, I read as many of them as I can before I turned them in, and they're just excellent letters, so many really intelligent, thoughtful people in this town. There were even about three that I would call novels, so be aware that you've got a lot of work to do. So, but that was, that was, you know, very gratifying, and I want to thank Ms. Kim Fowler for letting me in the back door, because I got there after the doors had locked. I didn't know the doors locked at 4:00, because it was 5:00 to submit, but I got there and was able to get in, and at 5:00, I was standing there as Angie was stamping the last of the letters that I had turned in, so we got them all in in time. Wanted also to mention that this Saturday, June 1st, at the community center, the Citizens for Stereobay Preservation are presenting what we call our kickoff celebration, and it's to have some fun, that's the whole idea, is have some fun. There will be food, home-cooked food courtesy of Ms. Seychelle Kahn and her team of cooks that will be providing the food. There will be music courtesy of Ms. Jill Knight, who is a very well-known artist in the area. So we're looking forward to hearing from her and her band, and eating the food, and being able to celebrate being together and caring about the city and the town and everything. And it'll be the kickoff celebration in honor of the A-24 measure, which will be coming up on the November ballot. And then also, I wanted to mention that on June 12th, 13th, and 14th, that will be just after the next council meeting, the California Coastal Commission will be in Morro Bay. They're holding their hearings, starting at 9:00 AM each day, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, and it will be held at the end of the bay. And I've been going to commission meetings, coastal commission meetings, for over 40 years, I can tell you, it's a real experience. It's a great thing to do, it can be very interesting, but it's very educational, and I would encourage everybody to, while their commissioner is in town, to come on down to the end of the bay those three days, at least one of them, and sit in for a session. Thank you very much.
Hello, I'm John Henry Parker, and my wife Annette and I, we live in Cambria. And I wanted to mention about the yoga studio, Let's Get Tuned, briefly. Nobody had mentioned yet that there's not really a great studio up in Cambria, in Cuyahoga, or I don't know about Paso or Tuscadaro, but there certainly is one in Slow, but it's a bit of a drive. So a good contingent of people that are here are actually Cambria residents. We come down here, we attend the yoga studio, do lots of activities and events, and we buy groceries, and we have dinner. It gets us down here to do a lot of things. So it's just an extra little comment about how we frequent Morro Bay in addition to our regular visits. And also, I've heard an international destination, well, it's a really incredible yoga certification program that's going to continue to grow and evolve, and that's what draws people from around the world to come get certified. So just wanted to make a couple of other comments. Thank you.
Hello, Mayor and council members. I am Seychelle Kahn, and I want to expand a little bit on the kickoff for A-24. I would like to invite everyone to come. One of the things that we're also doing, including fun, food, and music, is that we have an educational program that we would like people to come and learn what A-24 is all about. A-24 is a measure that will be on the November ballot for the citizens of Morro Bay to give their opinion on what they want to see on the north of Barkadero. What the measure would bring to the citizens is their right to decide land use on north, in the north part of our city. And I feel that in such a beautiful location, and that would impact our city to such a great degree, that it's almost a citizen's responsibility to come and bring their ideas and to assure that our city goes into history in a positive way. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members, city staff. My name is Jeff Echols, I'm a resident of North Morro Bay. Brief comments on two items that you've covered today. First was Ironman. Congratulations to Chief Watkins for doing a great job. We appreciate you in managing that. I was gone for the weekend, so I wasn't able to attend, but I was at last year's. My question regarding Ironman is, do we have a way to measure the economic benefit to the city? Because I was just listening to the extensive amount of resources that are used by the city to put that event on, and we need to be getting a return. This was sent to me by a friend who was wondering the same thing. The Ironman group is owned by Advance, a private, family-owned business in Orkilla Capital, a growth equity firm. According to Zippia, Advance has an annual revenue of around $2.4 billion, and Bloomberg estimates that billionaire businessman Donald Newhouse, the owner of Advance, has a personal wealth of nearly $20 billion. So I was distressed to see, and I don't know how it wound up, the situation with state parks, and who's going to pay for what, and whose pocket that eventually came out of. But looking at those kind of numbers from the host organization, let's negotiate to our favor in the future. The second item was with regard to the budget meeting that you had earlier, I wasn't able to attend because I had to work. If you can, do those during the evening, or during the 5:00 or 5:30 slot, that would be great. I think you'd get more participation. But I did sign on and catch that last half hour. I was really pleased that with regard to the Harbor Patrol, in terms of your Q&amp;E funds, that you maintain that position for reserve Harbor Patrol officers. Speaking as a licensed United States Coast Guard captain, who's spent the last 15 years, literally thousands of hours on the water out there, those reserve officers are of paramount importance, and it's also a training ground. Those reserve officers go on to become our Dana's and Becca's and everybody else that we esteem in the department. So thank you for maintaining that.
Just two quick comments. One is in reference to an email that I sent you regarding holding meetings in the afternoon, and particularly right before you have these regular meetings, and I just want you all to know you look very tired. So I'm encouraging you to make a shift, that you start holding afternoon meetings for closed session on a different day, and that you do bring budget back into the evening, where most of us can attend. So remember the feeling that you're having right now, and that that's a feeling you don't want to have when you should be dealing with really considered items on your agenda that affect us. The other thing that I want to mention, and I also could not attend the meeting this afternoon, because I was at work, but I got my business license letter on the email, thank you. But I want you to notice that this is something that's happened the last couple of years, and I don't know if this is because we're involved with HDL, but besides my normal business license that goes up by the CPI, which is almost, I don't know, it was between 6% and 10% this year, but there's an addition of a 10% renewal fee. Now, my business license is my renewal, so why am I being taxed or fined on top of that again? And I don't know if this is associated from when we started working with HDL, but I would, and this has only been a couple of years, I really want that removed. I do not want to pay a renewal fee on top of my business license fee, okay? And so my business license fee is $181, so my fee is $18. So now my business license is over $200, and, you know, that's just a lot, because it used to be under $100. Okay, thanks.
Good evening, Terri Simons. It's always fun to follow Betty. She brings up some interesting points. One of them is about business licenses. There was some discussion earlier, I think it was in the meeting before this. I did come to that meeting, and I'm as tired as the council looks. So I can, I can tell you that listening to two hours plus of financial numbers is exhausting, and I don't know how you guys do it. I barely stayed awake for it. I'm concerned that maybe there's a question about whether the Ironman should have paid sales tax. The real question is, is did they have to get a business license? If they got a business license, it would seem presumptive that they are paying sales tax. And if they're not, I think we need to look at their contract and make that correction in the next version. Couple of other items on the prior meeting, and I apologize for those in the audience that weren't here for that, but I have no other option to discuss it. Mr. Qualick raised an issue with the FEMA reimbursements, and that we might lose some opportunities to collect some reimbursable expenses if we don't get them done, but he didn't have the money to do them. I would suggest that we do have the money to do them. They're just in our contingency fund. And if Mr. Qualick can come through with a solid proposal from FEMA that if we get it done, we'll get the money, I suggest we borrow the money from our contingency fund. It would be a good investment to save a lot of money on getting FEMA to pay for improvements we're ultimately going to have to pay for. There was another issue that was raised about a one-year or two-year accounting period, and I would suggest that when we have a five-year projection forward on our budgeting, that that's much better than just a two-year budget window. So I just wanted to get that done. And then lastly, and I must say that I did alert our finance manager, finance director to this, when the discussion was going around about what sort of economies are we achieving, and I heard that there are 10 unfilled slots, unfilled employment opportunities in the city, it seems like that we're being pretty efficient if we're keeping the city going without the 10 people. Now, in fairness to our finance director, she did point out that some of those people are critical, and she's just waiting to fill those jobs. But that was something that I was surprised that our city manager didn't point to about efficiency, and that we are able to keep the ship afloat with a few hands not being paid. Thank you.
Hello, good evening, Nicole Dorfman. I want to second something that Betty Winholz said. It's a lot. I'm looking at your faces, and I just couldn't imagine my own self sitting hours and hours and hours of meetings. So I do encourage you to split up the closed session. I think it'd give you guys maybe free up some of your mental energy. So just having said that. I do want to say something about offshore wind, since it was brought up by an earlier speaker. There is, in fact, tremendous carbon footprint to develop offshore wind. We're talking about structures that are 1,000 feet tall, twice the size of our stacks. Those are built with steel. Okay, tremendous carbon footprint to mine the materials and then to construct it. I actually read something in an article the other day that said it will take over 100 years to neutralize the carbon emissions from the development of offshore wind. Okay, 100 years. So, and when we talk about it being helping with climate change, I'm going to read you something from the Bureau of Ocean Energy Management, a federal, a federal office. This is their final EIR for Vineyard Wind I Offshore Wind Energy Project, Appendix A, and I quote, "The proposed action would have negligible impacts on climate change during these activities and would have a negligible," sorry, "and would have negligible impacts on climate change during these activities and an overall minor beneficial impact on GHG emissions compared to the generation of the same amount of energy by existing grids. Development of offshore wind projects and the construction, implementation, operation, maintenance, and eventual decommissioning activities would cause some GHG emissions increased primarily through emissions of CO2. Overall, it is anticipated there would be no collective impact on global warming as a result of offshore wind projects, including the proposed action." Okay, this is the federal government, folks. And just one more piece about how it's not going to be beneficial in the way that many people hope that it would be, but it will also be highly detrimental to our harbor and our town. For example, we all see the Yakinah out there in the, excuse me, in the water. It's 200 feet long. Now imagine a ship twice that size coming into our harbor, and what would need to happen in order to make that even feasible. So just some thoughts I'm going to leave you with. Thank you.
Ready to close public comment? Any other speakers?
Hello, Mayor and council members and staff. Thank you for your service. My name is Jonathan Stoff. I'm here today to show support for John and Natalie at Let's Get Tuned. I would urge you to do anything in your power to keep them in their location and able to serve the community. They've directly impacted me, and the time I spend there with them has made me a better person and a better member of our community, a better father, and it's just invaluable to me. So thank you for your consideration. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Lower this down. Hello, Mayor and City Council. My name is Julia Thompson, and I am the board president for the Pride and Diversity Center in San Luis Obispo. I was informed that the proclamation that you'll be voting on later would not be able to be presented at this meeting, which there's been a lot of discussion about, a lot of other issues. I can understand why. This was a very full meeting. I just wanted to acknowledge the proclamation that you've put forward, and thank you for your time and energy into that. As I'm a current resident of Los Osos, but I grew up in Morro Bay. I went to Morro Bay High School. My parents are both business owners in this very small community, and I just wanted to touch on the impact that a proclamation like this, that recognition from a government entity can have on members of our community. It is completely invaluable, and we are so grateful for your time and energy into that proclamation. So thank you very much. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Appreciate it. AGP, do we have anyone in the queue?
Yes, Mayor, we have two raised hands. We're going to start first with Judy. One moment. All right, Judy, you're allowed to speak.
Hello, Council, Mayor. At the polls in 2022, Morro Bay residents made it clear that due to safety concerns, they do not want a 600-megawatt BASS. They voted out the sitting mayor. The majority of Morro Bay residents do not want a BASS here. 600-megawatts of batteries in an extremely high concentration, and for safety reasons, should not be installed in one area. The surrounding safety distance for high-concentration battery energy storage systems should be greater than the specified distance of just 440 yards. For a 600-megawatt BASS, it should be a minimum of 1 and 3/4 miles. The proposed location is not safe. It is too close to a well-populated RV park, community park, beaches, pedestrian bike path, and tourist hub. We have been told there is only a small probable chance of devastating explosions and toxic gas releases. The important variable is there is a chance. This property is in a flood zone. A catastrophe will be devastating for the health of wildlife, plants, people, and air quality. Where will the 5 million gallons of contaminated toxic water used for cooling thermal runaways be stored? Aside from the industrial construction noise pollution, upon completion of the BASS, will you like having a constant humming noise in our city? How will it feel to have our precious Morro Bay listed on the national terrorist target list? Will you protect our peaceful, healthy ways of life and listen to the majority of residents? Thank you very much.
All right, the next person in the queue is Don. Don, you're allowed to speak.
Thank you very much. I'm Don Maruska. Our family has lived in the county for 30 years, and I've had my office in Morro Bay that entire time. So please be an active member of this community. I want to speak briefly in support of Item 7D, and thank the city for reaching out to secure this Clean Energy Information and Outreach Grant. It's important for the Morro Bay community to have accurate and informative information, especially regarding offshore wind. I encourage the city in administering the grant to give particular attention to creating welcoming events that employ effective processes for respectful information sharing and learning. In particular, let's focus on relevant information and avoid the he said, she said adversarial dynamics that sometimes plague our community. With decades of experience in facilitating productive community workshops in this area, I'll be pleased to support the city's efforts. In summary, the Clean Energy Planning and Outreach Grant is a great opportunity for our community to learn together. Let's use it effectively. Thank you very much.
AGP, anyone else in the queue?
With that, Mayor, there are no more raised hands in the queue.
Thank you. With that, I will bring public comment back close. And I'm not going to have staff address anything because that took so long. We're going to try and move on and see if we're going to be able to get through this agenda tonight. So with that, we're going to move to public comment on the, excuse me, consent agenda, Items 7A through 7G. Public comment is open on items on the consent agenda. Seeing no takers, AGP. Are there any raised hands?
No raised hands in the queue.
Thank you very much. With that, I will close public comment on the consent agenda. Bring it back to council. Does anyone want to pull any items? To my left, to my right? No, I'll look for a motion, please.
I'll move approval of, let's see, the consent agenda, Items 7A through 7G.
Can I second, please?
I'll second that.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Moving on to Business Item 9A, Short-Term Rental Ordinance Implementation Update. Community Development, please.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council, Michael Codron, interim community development director. Tonight, I have a brief presentation for you on the short-term rental program and implementation in particular. The recommendation for the item tonight is to receive and file the report. This is informational. No action is requested or required. What I want to highlight is that this is a very similar presentation as was provided to the city council in January, which is some updates in terms of what's occurred since that point. But in terms of a little bit of background, I just want to highlight that the city worked on the STR ordinance for a long period of time. It did not come into effect until September 19th, 2021, when it was approved by the Coastal Commission. And again, the most recent update provided to the city council was on January 9th of this year. During that presentation, there were several issues and concerns about implementation of the ordinance. Those were identified. I don't, as we go through this report, I'm going to highlight that I don't think that these are issues so much with enforcement as with implementation. Just a little bit of background that I wanted to include, that was part of the prior presentation, is that the TOT, transient occupancy tax generated by short-term rentals is about $750,000 per year, which is 18% of the total TOT, and that, those are last year's numbers, the last fiscal year. There are 173 full-home rentals, and nine in commercial use areas, and there's a large waitlist. So these numbers are essentially the same. There's been little change since the January report. In terms of enforcement and the approach that community development had in 2023, was that the team was using software called Host Compliance, which is one of several vendors that provide a service of evaluating compliance with vacation rental ordinances. But the city also receives calls and emails from members of the public when they have concerns about an illegal vacation rental. And then the city also has a service request form on its website where complaints can be made. And so in 2023, this calendar year, 2023, there were 26 cases initiated and 12 citations issued. Fines right now for enforcement range from $100 to $500. Those can become daily fines to the extent that violations are not resolved. The code enforcement team in community development seeks to primarily gain compliance, and that violations are not a form of cost recovery or penalty. It's more just an effort to gain compliance. And then this is information previously presented as it relates to the cost of enforcement. Host compliance, that contract was a $30,000 annual cost. We're going to talk a little bit about another alternative that the city is looking to pursue, which is using the Rentalscape software that Deckard has developed, and that's $14,000 per year, so it's about half the price. Code enforcement, this relates to staff in community development and the fire department as well, I believe. And then our contract with HDL, which currently covers business license, also there's a component of that for vacation rentals. So the total is about $100,000 a year. And again, that's against $750,000 annually in terms of revenue. So some of the observed issues with ordinance and enforcement, and this was presented to the city council again in January, was that Granicus Host Compliance was not a flexible vendor. They were slow to respond to inquiries, and did not appear to pick up smaller platforms advertising short-term rentals. So that's something that we've learned by talking with other vendors, is that there are so many different ways that people market and fill their short-term rentals. And so you have to really cover them all. And then in terms of the HDL business license implementation and coordination, we found that there were, the handout was not being given out to new licensees, and HDL wasn't monitoring the $500 TOT payment. Some of that related to staffing changes here at the city, and some of that has been resolved through conversations with HDL. Some additional issues that we're continuing to work on, the inspection process is split between fire and code enforcement, and it was reported at that time that better coordination needed to occur, and that has happened. We've been working very closely with the building division manager and the fire marshal to coordinate on a checklist. And each will be inspecting different parts of the city in order to sort of triage the situation and make sure that we can inspect every vacation rental every four years. And that only amounts to about 44 inspections per year for vacation rentals. So that, that seems doable with existing resources. You know, there were challenges in terms of identifying the source of noise complaints when they were received by the police department. Vacation rentals, the list of all the current licensed ones were not posted on the website. That's something that we can resolve. And fines for violation of the STR ordinance are low, and so the agenda report that the city council has describes that those fines can be increased based on some new state law, provided that it's addressing health and safety impacts. But that's something provided that it's addressing health and safety impacts, but that's something, you know, that can be discussed in more depth later if the council is interested in hearing more about that. Some of the recommendations that were made at the time were to replace Granicus with another software to identify a primary point of contact at the city for HDL contract management, which we've done, and work with HDL to ensure that the short-term rental handout is being sent out, and we're tracking TOT payments. Code enforcement and fire, again, have coordinated on the inspection program. So I got some additional ones here. Code enforcement also is to work with police on the process to track and identify complaints, post a list of all licensed STRs to the city's community development webpage, and consider increases in fines. So these are all things that are either in process that we can implement or that will receive direction from the city council on as it relates to fines. In terms of currently what's underway and the sort of thrust of the agenda report is that the entire ordinance has lacked a certain amount of implementation. And I wanted to highlight that because, you know, staff in the city of Morro Bay and community development, we try to do as much as possible with limited resources and be as efficient as possible with the resources that we have. And so in terms of implementing the vacation rental ordinance when it was, you know, first adopted, we tried to use HDL and the business license to the greatest extent possible. And what that has proved to be is that the business license process itself wasn't robust enough to manage and permit new vacation rentals. And so I want to highlight some of the improvements that we're currently working on in addition to the other direction that we have from the city council. But one is that we have completed that inspection checklist between building and fire, so that's very important. We're going to publish that so that owners of short-term rentals know exactly what we're there to inspect, and we're not inspecting anything other than what is on that list. So that makes that a more efficient process where the property owners really know what to expect. We've also completed a front-end application for all new vacation rentals, and this, I think, is the big part of maybe what was missing from the prior implementation. And that's necessary primarily because of the complexity of the program. There are a lot of provisions in the program as it relates to parking requirements, as it relates to the buffers, that require an actual application and a staff member to do the review, even a site inspection prior to a permit being issued, that then enables the owner to go and get a business license. Previously, in trying to, you know, we would receive a business license application, be notified about that, and then go do the work, but it wasn't coming together the way it needed to. And so really fundamentally, we need a front-end process, like just like any other planning application that would occur where we can get that application completely evaluated and make an administrative approval before a business license is applied for. We have a sign standard that we have completed, and I can show this to the city council and to members of the audience. You know, it's visible from, you know, a distance, and so if this type of sign format is utilized, we've had public comment that it should all be the same standard. We can take council direction on that as to whether everybody has to use that standard or whether we just make that available as a convenience measure, but it is something that we will endeavor to enforce. We are recommending an increase in fines. That's not an action available to the city council tonight, but if the council wants to provide that direction to staff, the city attorney's office has already spent some time working on that, and we can come back with that recommendation. And so the next steps are, one, to initiate a new scope of work with HDL that is not just an HDL contract. It's really the existing contract we have with HDL as it relates to business licenses and vacation rentals with an additional feature where they utilize the Deckard RentalScape software suite, and they use that system along with all of their business licensing information and TOT information to identify properties that are not in compliance and share that information directly with code enforcement staff so that code enforcement staff, which is very limited, we have one halftime code enforcement officer and then another halftime building inspector who also does code enforcement. And those are limited resources, and so together, using this method of being, where we get that information from HDL using all of the technology that they will have at their disposal in order to make sure that we're making the best use of our code enforcement officer's limited time, we expect to get the program fully functioning with no illegal vacation rentals. Other cities in our county have accomplished that. Grover Beach has like no illegal vacation rentals through the use of RentalScape as their method. So we have also attached to the agenda report, and this is more background information, but there's a complete workflow of where, once we have HDL onboard, where our staff will begin to completely vet the existing list of short-term rentals that we have to make sure that only the compliant short-term rentals are the ones that have the limited number of 175 licenses. And, you know, that workflow is important. There's a logic to it, and you have to start at some point and move through the whole process. We have a lot of short-term rentals right now that they have a business license, but their business license may be expired or delinquent. TOT payments may be expired or delinquent or may not be quite $500. We have many, many that are current across the board, but in total, we need to really vet each one of those on the list to make sure that we have a fully functioning and compliant program. And then, of course, we need to update that waitlist accordingly because there are many otherwise compliant short-term rentals that are just within a buffer area of another short-term rental and would have to be on the waitlist in order to be able to act on, you know, to get the business license. So that completes my prepared presentation. There's a lot of information in the agenda report as well. Just wanted to basically convey the message that we're working on this. We think we have a solid plan in place, and we're happy to answer any questions that the council may have and take any direction that you might have as well.
Thank you, Mr. Codran. Great report. Thank you for the update. This has kind of been an ongoing conversation that we've had and included in our goals and things. So I'll start off with a few questions I have. On the Deckerscape, you said it's $14,000 for the program and that it syncs with HDL. So is HDL going to charge us more to facilitate this, or is this going to actually save them money because they're not doing the job we're paying them for now?
This is an additional scope of work. So the $14,000 is actually an expansion of our contract with HDL, and what it does is enable them to utilize their partnership with Deckard and utilize the RentalScape software suite. So currently, our contract with HDL does not include that range of services. And so by shifting from Granicus to HDL for this service, we're actually saving about $16,000 a year and getting a better service.
So there's, so we wouldn't pay more to HDL or we would pay more to HDL?
Well, we're saving money relative to our total cost.
The $40,000.
But we are paying, that additional $14,000 is a contract with HDL. So we are paying, we would be paying HDL more. We're expanding their scope.
Okay. Just trying to understand that.
Yep.
The illegal rentals? So when you start going through the list and identifying what would be considered illegal, those that are operating without any, you know, which we're getting the complaints on all the time, operating without any permits or anything, but those that are within the buffer of another place, how do you address those? Who loses their license, or are they just left there to have their business even though it's in violation?
I think we would go by the date of their initial application in terms of when that business license was approved. And so there have been, you know, business licenses issued without the full vetting, and what will happen is that over time with our inspection process, the ordinance requires all short-term rentals to come into compliance within one year of the ordinance adoption. You know, in terms of administratively, I think that that one year should begin once we start this new round of enforcement. But all existing short-term rentals under the ordinance are required to make a new application for their short-term rental license, and that really hasn't been done. So there are provisions within the short-term rental ordinance to address those exact situations because everybody who holds a license and is doing, you know, is renting, you know, these transient vacation rental units has to come back in and be essentially recertified as eligible. And then in the case that you described where you've got two that are too close to each other, there is a process for sort of the legal non-conforming ones, which have about a year to come into compliance. And I think that our approach would be the first one that was legally established would be the one that would have the right to continue to be there.
So the other one would have to cease, then?
Correct. That's the way the ordinance is written.
I just, you're talking about a long waiting list that we have that could shift some based on location in the community versus those that are operating illegally that are in violation, so, okay.
Yeah, and it's a complex ordinance. So vacation rentals are complex to begin with. I came from a city that allowed no vacation rentals, no short-term rentals allowed at all in the city of San Luis Obispo, besides those home stays where you have an owner occupied, like the city of Morro Bay also has. And it was a big job, a big scope of work to stay on top of just the illegal ones, like you say, that we don't have business licenses for and that we don't, you know, track records in terms of TOT and business license payment. And that's where that software is so essential because if they're never coming to the city for any kind of permit or approval, you're not going to know who they are unless you have that intelligence of the web crawlers that they use to go find the listings. And we were using basically a piece of software that was not state-of-the-art and have found one that's working well with other jurisdictions in the county that is state-of-the-art.
Thank you. And then my last question is for those that took out the permits that are just trying to not have other vacations rentals next to them, how are those addressed? If they pay the $500 on the TOT, they can still exist if they're not?
So my understanding, and I think the way that we would enforce this, is that, you know, we need to see, and the software gives us insight into this, we need to actually see that the stays are happening that result in the minimum $500 TOT because it's, like, you can't just pay the $500 and meet the requirements because that's not all we're interested in. We're interested in the visitors who are, you know, then patrons of local businesses and spending their time in city of Morro Bay, generating sales tax dollars, et cetera. So it's not enough to just pay your 500.
Thank you. Questions, Councilmember Burton?
I just wanted to thank you for the depth, the deep dive that's been happening behind the scenes. This is amazing, so thank you.
Councilmember Landrum? I'm wondering, in this scenario, how are ADUs addressed? Because those aren't allowed, those aren't legal for short-term rentals. Who, how is that enforced? Does this program, is it able to determine if something is an ADU?
That's a good question. I would need to, I appreciate that feedback. I think that's something that we need to follow up on and make sure occurs. To the extent that an ADU has a different address, that might be helpful. We also, at the city, you know, in community development, have records of properties that have ADUs, so that could be a search that we do when we find illegal vacation rentals. If they're happening in an ADU, that's just another, that gives us even more ability to enforce. In terms of licensed short-term rentals, again, we're going to be doing those inspections to make sure that the short-term rental is happening appropriately and not in an ADU.
And so now I'm a little confused. What are the fees? So people pay a business license, and then they pay these fees, and then they pay TOT. So what are the fees for? It was my understanding that they're for code enforcement.
Well, it's all of those costs that we highlighted on the slides. So the city
The inspection.
You know, is, you know, through the fees that are assessed via the business license process, you know, the city endeavors to have 100% cost recovery. And so we, these are the fees that have been calculated, and, you know, just in our conversations with Deckard specifically, they believe that we will easily recoup this revenue through the use of their software. Of course, they're selling their software, so that's something that they're going to represent, but my understanding is that that is actually borne out in other communities, and it's something we have to track. I think, you know, we need to be accountable to that, and so we'll be tracking how much additional TOT and, you know, fee cost we're recovering in relation to the city's costs.
Okay. And have they, since some of the issues you were talking about have been resolved, has there been a financial gain? Have you noticed a financial gain?
No, I wouldn't. I would say that the things that have been resolved are some of those internal coordination issues, but we have not resolved our reach into the community with respect to overseeing and implementing the short-term rental ordinance. There's a lot of work to do ahead of us to accomplish that.
And I was just going to point out that the community, I mean, you sounded like you were saying that it was recommended that we still use HDL and host, or an entity like Host Compliance, and I felt like the community was pretty vocal that they wanted it all brought back in-house, and I'm wondering if that has been considered yet with all of that you've done.
No, that hasn't been considered. I have been parts of those discussions in the past with other jurisdictions, and I would say that there is a way to use a managed competition analysis where you look at the cost of hiring city employees to implement a program versus using consultants. I think in this case, it would be the number of employees that you would need to effectively implement the ordinance. My belief is the cost would be way more than $100,000, which is about where your costs are right now, but an in-depth analysis hasn't been done on that.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Councilmember Ford?
Thank you, Mayor. Regarding Councilmember Landrum's question when it comes to ADUs, I know our city has stock plans available, and in order to get those, is there, I'm just curious, you know, we're, I don't know, I don't want to say a favor, but we're enabling people to produce ADUs by helping them expedite the process, save money, that sort of thing. So is there a follow-through currently in the planning department or in the code enforcement that checks in and makes sure that the ADUs aren't being used for things that, you know, like an STR or, I don't know, something that would not be allowed, essentially? If you could explain that process to me.
Sure. Just like you say, we make those plans available. The building code has been updated, and so those plans actually need an update before they can continue to be used. But I would say we don't treat those ADUs different than any other ADU in the city. There's no extra requirements for property owners just because they use the stock plans that the city provides.
Thank you for that. I do have a question, you know, when it comes to the signage that you had shown us, which I appreciate the prop, by the way, that was fun. We, you know, one of the comments, you know, when talking to property management that were interested in getting the signage up, they were willing to, you know, they were like, it's an expense, it's not a huge expense, but they were, you know, willing to, they were excited to put the signage out so that people could, you know, know that they were being operated by a property management company and how to get ahold of them. We, I think we may, we must have gotten that information to them because I saw all of those sign, all the signs pop up all of a sudden, so if that was thanks to our community development department, I want to thank you for that because it's great to be able to visually see those homes that are legally operating and to know how to get ahold of them. And the ones that I have witnessed are very easy to read and their phone numbers are really big and it's easy to identify. I like the idea of the universal signage. I'm wondering, you know, I guess the question would be, could that be something that we could consider in the next year or something so that the people that just, those companies that just produced all of the signage, all the signage don't have to go back and do it again? Just something to consider?
Yeah, of course. I think, you know, that we could have a universal standard or we could have just guidelines that are a little bit more general to allow for, you know, I think branding or however, you know, somebody wants to represent their property, that they have the ability to do that. The ones that you see popping up around town are primarily from the owners that are, where those properties are being managed by a vacation rental company or a real estate company. And, you know, we've thought about different ways to do this. One of the, you know, ideas was to produce 200 of these signs and just leave the details blank and people would write those details in when they collect the sign. That, there was a pretty, there was, we didn't quite have budget for that, so we held off on that. I think our preference would be just to provide these digital files and somebody, and then an owner can go and have the sign made themselves. But, you know, the ordinance isn't specific to whether all the signs are exactly the same. They just call for the signage, so that's more of a policy issue or a direction from the city council in terms of how you want us to implement that.
Yeah, that makes a lot of sense. My concern if they were to write it in would be, is it legible? And then would it fade really quickly, right? Because, you know, when they print these signs, like it's done with very specific, you know, sun, doesn't fade, you know, that kind of thing. So, but I appreciate this idea and I think it's important to make it as accessible as possible. And I think for the council to consider maybe not requiring that specific signage, but making sure that the specific, yeah, the specific requirements are in their signage and it's easy to read from the street. Because that's the biggest concern, because I see that most of the signs are kind of, you know, they're against the, you know, the building or the home, which is fine, but they're very easy, they're huge and they're easy to see and read and all of those things. So, but anyway, I just wanted to point out that I appreciate seeing this.
Great, thanks.
Thank you so much, Mr. Codran, for humoring me. I did ask to have that printed out so I could see the sign. I was hoping that they could be at the back of the room, but this was even better to see it in person live. I just felt that it was a good idea for people to get an idea of the scale of the signage and what they might be looking for out there. I know it's kind of a tough thing as to whether or not we want to make a uniform sign or allow for people who have already gotten creative and they're using their branding and clearly have signage up. I know we've got a couple large ones up on Pacific that I, you know, I walk by, so, and they're beautiful, actually. They don't deter from the look of the property whatsoever. But, you know, I'd be open to that conversation if the council wanted to. But I did want to address the fine, the fines, the fees, because, thank you for putting the link in there to the previous meeting. It was great to go back and watch Mayor Protam Landrum ask all those questions. It kind of helped me revisit my thoughts, but I do remember, or I thought, we had already said that we were interested in increasing fines, so I actually had to go back and watch it for that reason because I thought that in my head. So I was wondering, how would we approach that? Would that be, you know, a complete amendment to the ordinance itself when we would have to direct you to do that right now or later? Or what were you thinking that would look like?
Yeah, it is codified in Chapter 17, so it would be a direction from the city council to amend, and we would need to go through the process to do that, which would be a planning commission recommendation to the city council. And I think it's also part of our implementation plan, so it would involve coastal commission review.
So this ordinance that was drafted in 2020, it provides for and penalty enforcement that the infractions, misdemeanors, admin fines, they'll be punishable through Chapter 1. And so I think that we'd be okay with amending Chapter 1, which doesn't need to go to coastal commission, and we could simply specify in there that for violation of this chapter, 17.41, we're going to pursue it to state law, increase the infraction fines, which normally infractions are $100, $200, $500. State law recognized, just a few years ago, I was talking to one of the vacation rental experts at my office that actually helped write this in 2020, and she said state law has changed. Like, this has been a huge problem throughout the state, and so infractions can go up. And so we can actually levy fines for violations of public health and safety, not just any violation, but health and safety, which would be presumably noise, nuisance, et cetera. We can increase those fines substantially. And as Director Codran pointed out, when you're doing code enforcement, each day you can get a new violation. So if we really wanted to bring a heavy hammer to this, we could increase the fines, and if we had the staff to go out and issue these citations, we could have some very significant fines.
Question on that, actually. Would the fire marshal, if they're going in and doing a check, can they also fine? Or, I don't, I didn't know how that works, actually.
Yes, we do have the ability to issue citations.
Oh, yes, they do. Thank you. When, Mr. Newmeyer, to do that, we don't have to set a rate then? We can leave the language so that we don't have to come back every time that we want to adjust the rates?
So the council can set the fines. Currently, it's 100, 200, 500. State law provides, actually only for two areas can infractions go up. One of them is for building and safety codes. The other one is violation of short-term rental ordinances. And you can increase it up to $1,500 for the first violation, $3,000 for the second, and $5,000 for the third violation. Now, that's an "up to." So council would decide what they want the fine to be, and then that would go into Chapter 1.
So we can list it up to, but we could charge less? Are you saying we have to be specific? I mean, if we wanted to say, we're going to charge 500, but five years from now, council may want to charge 1,000 if it's up to, is that, or are we not?
Well, you would need to codify what you want the fine to be. So, you know, you could pick that the first violation is 1,000, the second is 2,000, you know? And then, of course, you know, code enforcement officers, you know, they have the flexibility of working with the potential violator, you know, where you give them the citation and then they come into compliance, we, you know, dismiss the violation, so.
I just didn't want to set it at a rate and then two years from now or four years from now, we're readdressing it if there was some sort of, but I get what you're saying.
Okay.
Thank you. Public comment is open on this item. I have two speaker slips, Garrett Key and Michelle.
Yeah, my name's Garrett Key. I reside in Morro Bay. For the record, I don't think any of you look tired, so.
Thank you.
I think you're perfectly fine.
Good answer.
Yeah. So my wife and I applied for an STR roughly two or three years ago. I reached out last year to the planning department as to where we are, where we're at on the waitlist. You know, I was told I was X number on the waitlist, a ways along the way, but there was also an active license within that proximity rule. That surprised me because I know all of my neighbors by first name. So I did my own research and found that there were none. The closest one was roughly 500 feet away. So I contacted the city or the planning department and let them know about my findings and have not heard, I think, since. I recently got in contact with the planning department a week or two ago. They were quick to return my phone call, but when I gave them my findings again, I didn't have any response as to why I was told there was an active license within my proximity. You know, I was an auditor for, I was an auditor for a majority of my career thus far, so I'm a skeptic naturally. So I, I'm curious as to, is there any intention or plan that would allow transparency, given the nature that the selection is so complex and there's a very specific priority on people, knowing that the planning department is in compliance with the actual ordinance? I know it's a question, and maybe I can speak with the planning department on a separate time, but I think that's more important than any opinion on the actual ordinance itself. Thank you.
Hi, Michelle Lester Cattery, North Morro Bay. I've been involved in the short-term rental situation as I've had an illegal one next to me for the last several years. I've gone to several workshops and discussed it, as well as ideas how we could enforce, keep a list of, suggest that they come into compliance. One thing I would like to see is more transparency as to who the owners are. Back in 2001, 2002, I reached out to Dana and received a listing of short-term rentals, which provided their license number, the owner's name, first and last, where they reside in the world, and where their rental location is, along with phone numbers, which makes it easier if there is an issue going on. You can simply reach out if they're not being managed by somebody and contact them, which would be nice because it's, you know, it's hard to deal with, especially when you have young children. The other thing is that those that are illegal and that do get caught renting legally and are on the waitlist, because some people don't want to sit and wait till that waitlist, till they come off of it, those people need to be either removed or popped to the bottom of the list because they're just, they have the attitude, which many do, and those that live elsewhere and have the property don't want to adhere to our ordinance and really don't give a, who it impacts. They're worried about their bottom dollar. The other thing is the increase in fines. Those that have all the money in the world, unless it hits them in the pocketbook, they're not going to stop doing what they're doing. One thing that does, that I noticed in the new ordinance, and it's something I've brought up to the fire chief, is the use of wood-burning fire pits. Because, one, Morro Bay is so close to each other, and, two, we are a fire hazard area because of the, you know, the, just where we are located with our insurance issues as well. I think possibly, I mean, we can't have those who live here, I mean, it would be nice, but to slowly have the short-term rentals convert to propane and stop the, you know, the chance of a fire, especially there are some older homes, there are many homes that, you know, the smoke, because it blows, you know, offshore or onshore, that it just goes straight into your house and there's nothing you can do. You can't just literally walk out and say, hey, can you please put your fire out? And there is a 15-foot distance that's supposed to be, you know, from anything combustible. Well, with our homes so close to each other, 15 feet from another house to a fence to somebody's bush, you're asking for a chance of fire. So I just, I'd like to see something more implemented when it comes to gas and otherwise. Oh, and when it comes to the noise and health issues, alcohol is not only the only issue. There's tobacco smoke, there is pot smoke, which, you know, it's great that it's legal, go do it in your car, go do it in your house. Don't do it in the front yard so that it impacts our family, because that's nothing that we believe or do, so we shouldn't have to tolerate somebody else's enjoyment. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members and city staff. Jeff Heckles from North Morro Bay. Thank you, Councilmember Ford, for bringing up the suggestion or the requirement that these signs are readable from the street. I brought that up before last time this was here, and I see a few in my neighborhood, but they're in windows or they're far away or they're faded, and I don't feel comfortable walking on anyone else's property to check out the sign. And then, brought this up last time, I think before Michael was, Mr. Codran was here, but I'm just going to bring it up again, it's my wish. You've heard that saying, there's an app for that. And I would love that if the city could come up with an app. In listening to Director Codran talk about HDL's offering through Decker of the suite, I wasn't quite sure if the, if the permittees, if the folks that own the STRs have to go on to that and register somehow. My vision is this, is that everyone has a phone, on that phone is an app, and on that app, everyone that has an STR in the city of Morro Bay is registered on that app. As any of you or our neighbors are walking down the street and they see something that looks like an STR, they can open up their app, go to the map, oh, there is one right there. It could be used in so many ways. And the city has a history of using and developing apps on their own, the police department, I don't know if they still use it, but several years ago had an app that I found very helpful. So that's my wish and prayer. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, council and staff. Terry Simons, Morro Bay. Resident next door to three vacation rentals, none of which are registered with the city. One of them is directly next door, two of them are about a block away. We've had this discussion, my wife and I have had this discussion for some time with members of the enforcement staff back in the day. We've, for all practical purposes, given up on the one right next door to us because in talking to the owner of that property, he says, look, I'm a lawyer. So we know that's not going anywhere. The city needs to be much more aggressive in this whole thing, or they need to abandon the ordinance altogether and not allow any vacation rentals in Morro Bay and just go around and cite, then all of them are illegal, go around and cite the ones that are illegal. I'm sorry for anybody that's on the waiting list, but I don't think he's ever going to see a vacation rental, they're too valuable. I don't think people are going to let them go unless you take them away from them. They're going to do whatever they need to do. The staff talks about, well, we just, we let them know that we'd like them to come into compliance. Well, if they don't have a current vacation rental permit, how are they going to come into compliance with a waiting list that goes on forever? They're not going to come into compliance, so what are you going to do? I don't know what to do. I've been dealing with this for years. Michelle mentioned the cigarette smoke coming in her windows from next door. We're unfortunately downwind of one of the vacation rentals, and when they get a big group there, the owner won't let them smoke in his house. So they all go out on their front porch and they all smoke there, and it all comes right into our house. It's annoying, but at least we know when there's people next door, so we go around and close all our windows. I make light of this, but it is, it is a real issue. And if you don't have a vacation rental in, or an illegal vacation rental in your neighborhood, you're so lucky, but don't, don't think that it won't happen to you, too. The proliferation of illegal vacation rentals is continuous in Morro Bay. All you have to do is drive around on the weekend, drive around on the week, and compare the traffic, parking and stuff, and look, look to see who your neighbors or non-neighbors are, and you'll right away identify, gee, there seems to be a whole bunch of new cars here, but only for the weekend. Then next weekend, it's a different batch of new cars. So we're quite tired of it all, and we'd like to see the whole thing go away. So we're quite tired of it all, and we'd like to see the whole thing go away. I don't know what it's going to take to do that, maybe, let's see, I guess it would be Measure B-25. And since I was participant in A-24, I'm perfectly happy to organize a B-25 measure to vacate all vacation rentals. Thank you.
Wow, that was quite something. I, I have a question regarding, Mr. Codran, you, you know, talked about how much money is coming in and that it's 18% of the, I think 18% of TOT, and I'm wondering how we distinguish short-term vacation rentals from, like, unhosted hotels? Is, is it easy to distinguish that when you're looking at your numbers? Just curious about that. I am very much in favor of increased fees for violations, somehow shutting down the illegal ones, seems like we probably are all in favor of that. But even more so, I would love to, and we've got so many smart people here, figure out a way to incentivize people who have short-term vacation rentals, legal or otherwise, to convert them to long-term rentals, which is what we really, really need in all income levels, right? So how can we do that? And maybe we need to have, you know, a forum or a study session or something, but I think it would be worthwhile, because in talking to people who have vacation rentals, I asked them, what would it take for you to do this? Is it a money thing? Is it just that you're getting much more money? And I heard, well, no, not necessarily. But they feel more protected having vacation rental, because I believe the laws in California really favor tenants, it's very hard to get tenants, but that the contracts through something like VRBO or Airbnb are really strong, and those folks will fight for you if the tenant won't leave. So, you know, that's a big topic, but just something to put out there, because I think it is a big problem. We, we are suffering with our housing stock. Many of them are, are tied up with vacation rentals. So how do we get those into the long-term market? Thank you.
AGP, are there any raised hands in the queue?
We do have one. Her name is Helene.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Fantastic. Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Helene Finger, and I have spoken to city staff and at, in person at public meetings since 2022, so maybe you remember me from those times, and I really appreciate having this opportunity to comment via Zoom tonight. I had a lot going on from work and just didn't have time to make it in person. So, listening to staff's presentation, I'm glad to see things are moving forward a little bit. As they mentioned, in September 2021 is when the ordinance was initiated. At that point, people, and prior to that point, were locked out, who did not already have a permit because of the cap. I'm one of those people, and I have a few suggestions. The one I most strongly want to encourage is to ask you to modify the workflow attachment. So that's one of the attachments, I gave you attachment two. The second bullet on that, I ask that you switch that to say that those that are not current get moved to the waitlist line, rather than giving them notice to correct. It's costing the city TOT money, it's not in compliance with the STR ordinance, because that ordinance requires non-compliant permit holders to have their permit revoked. They can get back in line like the rest of us, but they've already been given three years to comply at this point. And others like me that have been waiting to get our permit should not be waiting even longer. It was really concerning when I heard that there was thought of moving the compliance date back. So the three things I want to leave you with are, number one, please change the second bullet on the workforce attachment to say, remove non-compliant STRs. So right now, the bullet reads, identify STRs with business license or TOT accounts that are not current, and I'm asking you to, to switch the end of that bullet to say, and remove those STRs. The second thing I'm asking is to please keep September 2022 as the one year to comply date. Changing this as it was suggested to 2025 would be providing three years to comply, not one. And 20, September 2022 compliance is the legal and fair way to proceed. It's also required by the Coastal Commission, so I don't think it's legal to switch it to 2025. And the third thing I want to say is, I agree with the speakers about transparency. Please make the list of current permit holders public, get that in a place where everyone can see it, as well as the waitlist. I don't even know where I'm at on the waitlist. I don't, when I asked the question, I heard the same thing that the speaker that previously spoke said, he was told there were people in their vicinity, and when I looked at the map, I didn't see that, so.
Thank you.
And thank you.
AGP, anyone else in the queue?
There are no other hands.
Thank you. With that, I will close public comment and bring it back to council. Mr. Codran, would you like to address any of those comments?
Sure. Yeah, I think there's definitely a theme through those comments as it relates to transparency, accountability. It is our intent to post the list on the website. In terms of how much detail that has, that's probably something that I'll discuss with the city manager and city attorney and others in terms of what's appropriate to, to share, but I think having that information available, it's always been intended, it's just that right now, the information, I wouldn't feel comfortable posting that information, just because it needs to be fully vetted. In terms of, you know, repercussions, I think we'll take direction from the city council as it relates to any increase in fines. Our plan going forward absolutely provides for the, the best enforcement regime that we have available to us right now. That's my recommendation to you, my, my belief in terms of what we're putting in place. But other things about outdoor uses, smoking, having, like campfires in your yard, those kinds of things, you know, if those are things that are, we can enforce based on other parts of the municipal code, then we can, we can include that in our brochure and advise people of that. I don't think that those items are specifically in the short-term rental ordinance right now, but we may have other ordinances that we can enforce that people need to be aware of. You know, in terms of the $750,000, I think that's all short-term rentals. I don't think that's just the whole home short-term rentals, so, and I don't believe that's the unhosted hotels, which is a relatively new component of that, that mix, that makeup. And I think we have challenges defining, you know, exactly what that is, and there's the issues there, is there's a complexity between what, you know, zoning definitions and building code definitions and building code requirements relative to a hotel versus an unhosted hotel or just a residential unit. A lot of times, those unhosted hotels are built to a residential standard, and they basically just function like short-term rentals. In other ways, they're built more like hotels, but they don't have that onsite manager, and so they have a bunch of other mechanisms in place to address, you know, emergencies and safety in general. Would, would love to develop an app, you know, around this program, and it's actually not a very difficult thing to do, but what would be most important to have something like an app where you're sharing real-time information with people, is that you have a very real, accurate and up-to-date database that's actively managed. So you can't just have a database that you update once a week or once a month as part of an app, because the information's changing all the time, and if you're sharing that with the public, it would have to be, you know, real-time or very current information. And I think that hits on all of the public testimony, but if I missed anything, let me know.
Thank you for that. Appreciate it. Questions, comments, questions?
Yeah, I have a follow-up to that question about, you know, maybe not an app, but when you, when you go onto your phone and you, you're looking up, or you're looking at the map and businesses, like business names are listed, like on a Google map or whatever, and they pop up and you conceive different businesses, I'm just curious, you know, if something like that, how that would, how that could work in theory for STRs, because they are operating businesses, and, you know, if that, there's some way that they would have to have a Google listing, and they would be, you know, I, I think that there could be some workarounds there, is what I'm getting at, if there's a way that they're required, oops, sorry, as a part of, as a part of their business operation, that they have to maintain that or something, I don't know, just some, just an idea. I don't have any other questions at this time, but I think that, I think Ms. Dorfman had a, a great point about, you know, shortage of long-term rentals, how do we incentivize? I think that is a bigger conversation that I think that we need to have. And then also, you know, I think that we should, the current business owners that are operating, that are doing the right thing with their businesses, with their STRs, and they're following the ordinance, you know, good for them. However, I am definitely interested in raising fines. I do think that the pocketbook is somewhere that, that could make a difference. And I agree that there, you know, and I hope that we can get that waitlist updated as soon as possible. I think the, the homeowners and the businesses that are waiting, especially homeowners, that are waiting to, to find out where their lists, where they're at on that list, I think that that would be great for us to get, eventually for them, you know, to have that readily available.
Right, and if I, if I could add, I know there was public comment about what to do in the workflow on attachment two, in terms of what happens when we're vetting the list and we, we find people that are just maybe out of date in renewal of their business license or TOT. And the reason why those people don't lose their license is just due process for permit holders is something that we have to continue to be aware of. But it's a pretty common thing for somebody to just be a little bit delinquent in paying their, in renewing their business license or in renewing their, their, their TOT account. And, you know, we don't revoke a hotel's license for being a little bit late, so we're just trying to make sure we're, we're offering due process, we're treating people equally across the board in terms of how we enforce. And so I think that we understand the comment and will, that's the purpose of this, is actually to sift, remove non-compliant short-term rentals, but not to do it haphazardly to where we're violating somebody's rights who actually has a permit.
And I have a question. You know, oftentimes, we, I hear from some neighbors that have operations, like, oh, they're just family members. You know, how do we, how do we approach, and maybe that's more of a question for the code enforcement team, but it's kind of like their word versus ours, kind of a situation. And how do you assess if an illegal operation is happening and they're all family members? Like, how do we determine that it's not?
Yeah, I, I think, I wish, and maybe in the future, you can be provided, the council could be provided with a demonstration of the Rentalscape software, but the level of detail is unbelievable. I mean, they give you very specific information about the number of nights that that vacation rental was occupied, was rented. They have tools that, you know, scrub all those websites and, and identify that, and so somebody can't say it's just, you know, a family member when it's, you know, prolific and, you know, that, that, that short-term rental is constantly in use. It, it gets much more difficult when short-term rentals are just being used occasionally, and maybe there are some family members mixed in with actual residents, and that, that can happen, so enforcement is probably never going to be, like, perfect in that sense. But, you know, there are big penalties for doing a illegal vacation rental, even aside of the fines, because if all of a sudden you're presented with a bill for back TOT, where you've been, and we have, we'll have records, using Rentalscape, we're going to have records going back several years, and where they're going to identify specific properties that have been in use and have not paid their TOT, that TOT is owed to the city, and that can be pursued. And it's not going to be done across the board, but I think what we'll find is that there are certain violators where it will make sense for the city to invest in enforcement actions to get that back TOT.
I was just curious that, I'm surprised that Deckard wouldn't have some sort of app connection. I'm wondering if we've even looked at that, because it kind of would be collaborative and makes sense that they would have something that, you know, would be user-friendly to citizens.
Yeah, they, I don't know what their user, like, their general user interface is, but I'm sure if they have that, they would have an app. And it's a great tool, that, that, we're not contracting directly with Deckard, we're contracting with HDL who uses Deckard, so I don't, you know, there may be some limit in terms of what our access is to that, to, to an app or to that software. And I don't know what the public has access to, but that would be interesting to see.
I would, I would just comment to your, add to your comment about the not being, enforcing those that have not renewed their permit or paid their TOT. I would want some, want some sort of time limit attached to that, not just, oh, oops, we forgot, did we forget all year, two years? You know, I think that, I agree that we don't want to just start throwing everybody off the list, but there has to be some parameters to it all, so.
We, we've listed 30 days.
Oh, okay. I didn't know that. Thanks. Thank you. Councilmember Burton?
I don't have any, anything further to add, I'm just fascinated, though, by the, the leaps of the technology and the thought of being able to recollect back TOT. Wow.
I want to know if, well, I'm in agreement with the caller, actually, that using the date of September 22 is a good idea, as this is, we're in, in '24 now, it's been two years since then, and I feel like that's plenty of time. I know, I mean, it, it just seems like, why would we keep going with this? One of the problems that was brought up in my town hall meeting, from Realtors even, is that there's such a problem getting business licenses from HDL, so, and that's a whole nother, a whole nother avenue of HDL, and, which is, I'm in favor of bringing, really look, I, I think that's a future agenda item, I think, that we're supposed to be looking into, is the, the possibility of bringing that back in-house. And so I, I'm really curious about that, because I feel like it affects things like this, too, negatively. And, um, let's see, I'm, I really like the transparency. As for the incentives, one thing that was brought up in, in my town hall meeting was that there are short-term, and incentive, incentives and encouraging people to use these for housing rather than rentals. One of the things that was brought up in my town hall meeting was there are short-term rental barons, that, where one person owns, you know, that's just their business, and they, that's all, that's what they do, is they buy houses and just rent them. And so if there's some way that we can prevent that, I don't know if the city attorney knows if that's possible, but that seems like it might be a good idea to start with incentiv, or it wouldn't really be incentivizing, it would be just limiting that ability.
I don't think that the city could, I think it'd be difficult to limit the right-of-contract for folks to have real estate in the city. In regards to how many permits they can get, I think we could amend the ordinance to say that, you know, one entity, one corporation, whatever, you know,
that, you know, one entity, one corporation, whatever, you know, has, can only have X amount of permits. That we could do, I think. And also in regards to your question, Councilmember Landrum, about the one-year limit, I think that that is referring to, the ordinance has a legal non-conforming section in here. And it provides that if you were licensed, or if you were a legal STR before this ordinance went into effect, then that operator had the burden of coming to the city within one year and obtaining a permit. So I do believe, I agree with Director Codron that it's open to interpretation, I suppose, on how we enforce that, but I suppose we could start with how many of these legal non-conforming ones came to us within one year of the effective date. And then the city could make the decision on whether or not, at this point, we are going to say, you know, we, under due process laws, gave you a year to come into compliance. So that's something that Director Codron and I could discuss further. This ordinance, I, I think it should be clear, I mean, there's a lot of good stuff in here. It's just that staff hasn't had, I think, the resources over the years to fully embrace all of it. I mean, for example, the signs. I mean, it says that the signs have to be visible from the public right of way. So one of the, one of the public comments was about, you know, it'd be great if you could make sure you could see these from the street. Well, that's the requirement, you got to be able to see it from the sidewalk. I mean, you can't have like a little sign in your window and there really haven't even been signs up anyways. I mean, this has been a requirement. So I'm very optimistic about, you know, now that this ordinance is being embraced and Director Codron has dived into this, that, that a lot of this, these rules will be used.
If I could just, for having a conversation about this a little bit, you know, the thing about the one year to make an application to come into compliance is there was no application. So the ordinance was adopted, the September 2022 came around, people were renewing their business licenses, but we hadn't established, and we still haven't established an actual application for short-term rental. And so once that happens for the first time, that's why I was suggesting one year from that point in time so that we could track, put everybody on the same footing and track that from a specific point in time when we know we're effectively implementing the ordinance.
Thank you for that clarification. And, and as far as the, I, I get the land baron thing and I think I'm in strong support of limiting how many licenses an entity or a person can have. I wanted to know why, why we, I have written here, why we don't have the current data? Is that for the, it sound, you said that we didn't have the current data? Oh, oh, you would have to keep the data updated all the time? Why, why don't we have that? Like, why wouldn't we have that?
So in terms of current data, we've only been using the business license process. And so that doesn't require applicants to share all of the information about their short-term rental for us to assess that it's in compliance. And we haven't started the inspection regime yet. And so that's just a matter of what information we're collecting.
Okay. So that's something to work towards?
Yeah, that's something.
Okay. And then the $500 minimum for the TOTs, I, I think that should be, that should possibly be higher to, you know, if we're going to be doing this for TOT, why wouldn't we try to encourage?
State guidelines.
Is it? Oh, okay. But is that a, is that necessary? I mean?
I, so, so we have in the ordinance that there's a $500 minimum TOT that needs to be paid. We could review further on whether the city could increase that. And also something to consider too is that, you know, because we are subject to the Coastal Commission, we do have to allow some STRs. I mean, you know, there's been references to, well, Director Codron talked about in Slow, you know, they just don't let them, they just don't let them have them. Well, we don't have that option under the Coastal Commission. We have to allow some STRs. That being said, I think the city could potentially look at maximizing the TOT that we're getting from the 175 STRs that we're licensing. And, you know, if the city wanted to devote some resources into reviewing, you know, who gets the permits based upon who can maximize the TOT that they provide to the city. And I thought that might be one way for the city to maximize this resource because I'm sure there's some STR operators that, you know, maybe rent twice in the summer and otherwise they just leave the, the place open for friends, family, or just they might be able to make it there themselves in the weekend. Other people want to rent this out every weekend. This is a business. And so the city might want to look into, you know, how much TOT are we getting from each of these operators? And then prioritize those who maybe will generate $5,000, $10,000. You know, I'm not sure what the spread is, but that would require some data analysis and I don't expect staff would be bringing this back, you know, soon or, you know, in the next meeting or two or whatever. But that's one way to look at this in terms of maximizing our return on this.
And I think we're, we're taking notes on the comments of the city council, my recommendation on further changes other, other than the fines, which are kind of discussed in the agenda report, would be to give us a year of solid implementation to come back with information, like with dollar and cents information as it relates to TOT with, with a complete list that is verifiable and accurate and up to date. And then at that point, we could look at, we would have enough information to be able to make informed decisions about ways to tweak the ordinance and improve it. That would be my recommendation.
Okay. I mean, I'm wondering if you could do it in six months?
Whatever the council would, whatever direction you all provide.
I, I, can we, and maybe this is in phases because I'm recognizing that some of these things that you're talking about are going to be more challenging and take more time and we don't know in the end ultimately if we would implement them. But some of the other things that can be addressed sooner, I think, as far as updating the list, is that something, I mean, you, maybe you can give us on a report out, a timeline of where some of those things might be implemented over the course of the year so that we can see some actions. And I appreciate, I think we all do and recognize, you've done more in the short time you've been here than we've seen in the last year and a half. So for that, thank you for that. We, we appreciate it, we recognize it. My comment about the elimination of STRs, we wouldn't be because they're allowed in the commercial area. So we wouldn't be in violation as far as that goes. But I, I think you said you have some information from this, the signs? Are we looking at digital files with the guidelines and the businesses can print their own? Is that what we're looking? I know, like you said, people want to brand their rentals.
I, I had a couple more, is that okay? If I finish?
Oh, questions?
Yeah. I, I wanted to, it hadn't been brought up, the home shares, really, and there, there, people really felt that strongly that home shares should be in a different category and shouldn't be, you know, because that's a way to really encourage people to come to the area and not abuse the neighborhood because the homeowner is there. And, and home shares should maybe not have the same fine fee that, that the other ones have. And so I think that's something to consider. And also there was, there were suggestions from realtors that they, that we, the city required, I don't know if we can require this, but they do, they require an agreement that's signed by the renter and they, they have fines, you know, for, for things like dogs and smoke and, you know, anything that we didn't want, they have additional fines that they can do themselves too. And I think, I think Airbnb will do something like that too. So if we work with them, communicate with them, that can probably help too.
Yeah, and I don't think that could be ad hoc, that would have to be codified where we would have requirements of property owners who are letting short-term rentals in terms of the provisions in their lease.
Right, but it seems like it would be really easy to work off what the realtors have already come up with.
Sure.
And also, if I could just point out, in deference to Director Codron, we hadn't talked about the non-conforming year limitation. And it does make sense to me that if applications weren't available back then, then I could see some sense in what Director Codron was saying. We, we haven't discussed in, in the minutia, this STR ordinance. And also for what it's worth, this ordinance is set up where it has a provision and here we're counsel by resolution can pass minor regulations because the big hurdle here is that if we amend this ordinance, we're going to have to go to Coastal Commission. So just something to keep in mind and I can talk with Director Codron more as, as we move along with this.
Can I ask one last question? The home shares, I know this has been said before and I apologize for not remembering, is it a part of the 175 or is it separate?
No, it's separate, is my understanding.
It's separate? Okay.
And not limited, the way that short-term rentals are not limited in commercial districts or home shares, the 175 cap, my understanding is just the whole house rentals in residential districts.
Okay. Thank you.
And when you look into all that, if you could bring back an option there for a, a different fee schedule for the home shares, we've, we've definitely heard the appeal from local residents who are living in their homes and still having to pay the same rate as the full listed. And then were we looking at some?
Signs.
The signs, yeah. So are we good with the companies? We don't want to mandate that it's moral base? Is that good? Everybody's good with that?
I think we should have it available for those who don't have one designed, maybe if we just have like a digital.
Is that a digital file?
Yeah, just one that they can type in their own information so they don't have to write it in. And.
Standard rules.
Standard rules that apply to anyone who creates their own would be my.
Do you mean like as far as sign, the size and everything?
Yeah. Yeah, the size and what is required to be on the signage. And they can be creative as long as it's readable from the street.
Yeah, I agree.
We have requirements in the code for the signs.
Right.
So, and it, and it meets those criteria.
To enforce them.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I love the idea though of offering the digital graphic ready to go.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I could just respond to one item, which is just like what I've been able to accomplish in the relatively short period of time, right? I just want to say that like the staff in community development, when I came in, identified this for me as a huge priority. There is so much to do and priorities, every day it seems like there's a new top priority. And the, the staff that developed this ordinance and worked through it were pulled in a lot of different directions and had, you know, we have to make decisions about what the priorities are as, as that occurs. And so, but there was a recognition in the department that, you know, we needed to move the ball forward on this. I had the luxury really of being interim and being able to sort of focus on certain things and I definitely took this up at the urging of the team in community development. So I just wanted to highlight that for you.
Thank you. We want to appreciate you for it though. Thank you. I, I think some of the other things and then that we heard tonight, so the transparency, the information on the owners and all that, and I would think it would follow, having a business license, like many of us up here do in town, would follow the same rules. You know who the owner is, where the location is, all those things, the standard licensing and then whatever else would be pertinent. That would just be a given, but definitely I would think that list, I mean, you can go on and see the business license of people who have businesses here already.
Yeah, I mean, I have neighbors who have like a county, like their CPAs and you pull up like a Google map and it's like, you see their house and you see their license, you see what their business name is. And so I'm just curious if that was something we could look into.
And again, we know it's all time consuming, so whatever you feel you can prioritize and bring to us. And then I, I think the question would be what we want to do with the non-compliant as far as some of the suggestions, and I have to say I support them as far as moving them to the bottom of the list or dropping them off or, you know, having some, you know, it would be encouraging bad behavior to not take some sort of action. So perhaps you can bring back some recommendations on that also that could be implemented along the way.
Mayor, on, on that note, the code does provide that for minor violations, the licenses can be suspended, for major violations, they can be revoked. And so we do have a mechanism there. And to echo what Director Codron was saying, I know over the years, the Community Development Department has been aware of the fact that this ordinance is there, it's just that they've been pulled in so many directions with resources. But I do see right now that this has become a priority for the city and I do think this is moving along well, so that's great.
Thank you. Anything else we want to add?
Did we do the fines? Did we, are we going to increase?
We're looking at the maximum that the state allows, was that correct?
Yeah, I mean, it seems like it would be a good idea to do that now.
No, they're, they'll do, they'll include that, yeah, we're going to include that.
We can't do that sooner?
I think it could be at the direction of the council if that's one of the first items that you want to come back.
The fines.
We could bring back an ordinance amendment before the rest of this is done. I don't think that's an issue.
And I appreciate that and I'll see what the will of the council is, but I don't want to take the time where we're just doing each one thing. So if we can group some things together that, and that's why I said perhaps you can bring back, you know, what we can do, one, two, three, what we can do, four, five, six, and then we can do them as a little, get some more bang for our buck maybe?
Okay.
Or your buck.
Yeah, okay.
Our buck for your time.
Yeah.
Thank you. Does that work? Okay. You have enough?
I do. Thank you very much.
Thank you for the presentation.
And I'll just make a quick plug for your new community development director has done short-term rental programs in Los Osos, Cayucas and Cambria, so very experienced coming in.
Thank you. Oh, I thought you were going to stay and do it for us. Come on, we've been down this path. Okay, that ends our business. Future council, future agenda items? See a finger up?
I have two. I was, I guess I should ask the city attorney maybe his, for his recommendation on this about the, the sign ordinance, the temporary sign ordinance. It's, it seems like there, it, there, we got a notice from the, the city clerk that the sign ordinance requires, you know, is really limited to 30 days, I think it was. And it's been brought to my attention that that is not include, that, that ordinance was, when it was changed, it, it dropped out the political sign part. And I think it would be good to reinstate that into the zoning code. And I'm wondering if, you know, if we're not going to, it just, it, the direction we were going in was to just not enforce it and that doesn't seem like a good, a good precedent to set with our, with our codes and, and ordinances. And I think we should be consistent and I'm wondering what you would recommend for that.
So the temporary sign restriction right now, it provides for a 30-day limit. And the city can't, under the First Amendment, have content-based distinctions for signs. So we can't carve out political signs and say that, you know, they can be there for 90 days, but all other signs, which would include like, you know, religious events or other political speech, not related to maybe elections or just someone's opinion on the world. So we can't have content-based distinctions. Temporary signs just have to be treated the same. That being said, there's two different areas we can regulate in public right of ways and then on, on private property. My understanding is right now, because it's questionable whether or not the 30-day limit is compliant with current 2024 First Amendment time, place, manner law, we're not enforcing it. Council's direction, we can do further review on whether or not that code that was adopted quite some time ago is something that we should just not be enforcing based upon legal analysis. In regards to amending the code, we certainly could do that too. That's going to be, again, something where if we amend Title 17, we're going to have to go to the Coastal Commission. So that's always an issue. But at council's direction, certainly we could do more review on whether it's appropriate to just simply not enforce the 30-day item past this temporary pause that I believe the city right now is engaging in.
So that's the only option is just to not enforce our, either, either go the Coastal Commission or just have a minimum?
Well, I, I mean, the best option obviously is to amend the code. Well, I, I mean, the best option, obviously, is to amend the code. I'm just pointing out that because we're in the coastal zone, it's more laborious than normal code amendment. But, I mean, yes, optimally, we would amend the code and just bite the bullet and just pass the ordinance, and then hope Coastal Commission reviews it timely.
So if we were to amend the code for the short-term rentals, we could like do those two things at, at the same time, or, or something?
We could put the request in at the same time. And I would defer, and I'm sure Director Codron doesn't know right now on the spot, but I would defer to the community development on figuring out the timeline for Coastal Commission's review. You know, usually, the city communicates with them on, hey, we got something coming your way, like what are we realistically looking at in terms of your ability to review it?
Okay, thank you. I guess I'll
Wait on
wait on that one. And then the other one, since I announced, earlier in my announcements, I was, about the use of glyphosate on, in city, in city public spaces. And I'm just wondering if I could get support to consider looking into banning that on, in public spaces.
Don't we have sent that before to planning or to?
That was the plastic
Public planning commission or the?
That was the plastic grass.
Oh.
The artificial turf.
Or Public Works. I thought we sent it to
Uh-uh. I, I know, I was so surprised that it, that's right on the estuary, and like so concerned that that's going into our, you know, our, our estuary water. And, and it's, it's like a known carcinogen. And I'm just wondering if I, yeah, if I have any support with, with that.
Do we want to start it here, or do we want to direct it to one of our advisory boards?
The, okay, which one would it be? Parks and Rec, or?
Mr. Qualick, you want to weigh in on that? Once you send it to Kirk?
I, I would recommend sending that to the Public Works Advisory Board, since it would apply to areas outside of parks as well.
I, I also would like to add that if that's something that council would like to look into further, and interestingly, we could engage our state lobbyists and to perhaps push on a state level for some sort of a more broader regulation from state.
Thank you. That's a good idea.
That we support that, yeah, for sure. I mean, we just had 2,000 people swimming in our bay, and I just, I feel like we should be, have it be as clean as we can, you know.
What I think I would suggest, as council's consent, I can have the, the state lobbyists and council folks to get contact, connect with Councilmember Landrum, and then we can, you know, staff can help and develop some sort of a agenda, so to speak, and bring back to City Council and see if City Council wishes to support that, to push and to lobby in the state level, state legislation.
Well, well, I, I'm interested in that, as well as banning it here in Moral Bay. And, and there's other cities that have done that. I don't think it's like a new thing at all. There's many cities in California that have done it, so.
Okay, so, yeah.
So, PWEB, yeah.
Thank you.
Do I have support for that?
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Thank you. Council, this meeting will be adjourned. The question is, do we want to go back and resume finance, or do we want to do our scheduled meeting tomorrow? It's almost nine o'clock. I have my microphone. Oh, sorry. Because I'm, I don't know if we can finish in 30 minutes, and then we're just going to be here and go past, and we've already done six hours. Pretty close. So we're scheduled for tomorrow, correct, Ms. Swanson? Yes. Is everyone good with that? Yeah, I think so.
No, I want to go more.
We want to go
Four PM.
Three o'clock, correct? Four, four o'clock.
Four o'clock was the time that had been previously
Thank you. Four o'clock. Thank you. Here.
Continuing the budget meeting to tomorrow at four o'clock here at Veterans Hall?
Yes, please.
Okay.
And before we adjourn, may I ask the Finance Director if you could please forward council those slides that we weren't able to see? None of us were able to see those last figures.
Yes, indeed. We will email those out to you tonight.
Thank you very much. Well, or tomorrow's fine. Thank you, Emily. Thank you. With that, we're adjourned. Thank you, staff. Appreciate it. Thank you.